To which they are speaking on and shall not be repetitive. All right? Most of the audience, please, I'm sorry, members of the audience, please respect the rights of others and do not create noise or other disturbances as other individuals are speaking, whether you are pro or against what they're saying. Let there be one microphone, only one person speaking at a time. That's to not disrupt or disturb persons who are addressing city council, council members, who are speaking or otherwise impede the orderly conduct of the meeting. And thank you for your careful adherence to these principles. Now we're moving on to the next item on the agenda, which is a reading and approval of the minutes from our previous meeting on January ninth, two thousand twenty-three.
Mayor, I make a motion that we dispense with the reading of minutes of January the ninth, two thousand twenty-three, and that be adopted, no corrections.
All right, motion has been made and seconded to adopt the minutes as they have been recorded. Are there, council, any comments or questions about this particular motion? Are there any public comments or questions about this motion? Okay, Mrs. Stacy C. and Nun, roll call vote.
Eli.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
P T.
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. We all love the opportunities, the chances we have to welcome into council chambers special guests. And today's special guest, I am really excited to have them before us. It's Northwestern State Cheer Team. And they brought home the gold at the U C A College National State Champions. So I think we've got many of them out in the foyer, and we're going to get as many of them as we can to come in. I was riding my bicycle last Sunday, and Facebook started to blow up. And by the way, every third Sunday at two thirty, we do what's called Bike Sunday. So every third Sunday of the month at two thirty, we pull out from Watson Library, go down M L K, come up Texas Street, go down Front Street, come back on University. It's a three-mile ride, but while we were doing that, I started to get tagged. And I was noticed about this great achievement of the cheer team that they brought home the gold. We see there are many of them here. Is there somebody speaking on your behalf? We just want someone to enlighten us about this great accomplishment. And as you come to the microphone, sir, please state, yes, sir, please state your first and last name, and just tell us briefly about this accomplishment, maybe share some of the things you had to do to get to where you are, and just really impress upon us how, the magnitude of this accomplishment.
Hello, my name is Gavin Acor. I'm a fifth-year member of the cheer team. This accomplishment that we have made here is history-making for our program, history-making for the university. Fourth place in Nationals, we made it to finals. It was amazing. I can't put into words the feelings that we felt on that mat. First in the world against teams from Canada and Mexico was phenomenal. I, like I said, I can't even put into words what we felt on that mat. The sense of family that I have with all of these kids here, it just, it's a whole family of people, and we brought it all together. We brought together a routine that we created ourselves and with the wonderful help of our coaches, Amy Step and Trey, they're all the way in the back. But the wonderful routine choreography that they gave us, it really helped slingshot just passion and confidence going into those competitions. And we knew that we were there to compete, and we knew that we were there to win. So I guess that's all I can say is that's what we went there and did. It feels really awkward being up here and just, you know, speaking to you, because usually we're yelling. So we're gonna go ahead and entertain, because we are entertainers at the end of the day, and we want to give something back to y'all. Thank you.
Oh, that is awesome, okay. Great treat, great treat. Hold up, hold up, don't go anywhere. We want a picture. We want a picture. Whoever else is a part, come on, is that Ms. Mr., come on, Amy, that's you back there? Come on. Look, we're gonna read, we have a plaque we're gonna give you. How about another round of applause for Northwestern State Cheer Team bringing home the gold? Hey, they totally caught me by surprise when, didn't know they were coming to perform before us, but that is, that is absolutely such a pleasant surprise. Next item we've got is Ms. Jessica Broadway. She's a C P A, one of the ones who audit the books for the city of Natchitoches. However, Jessica is needing to reschedule. There's a couple of things we need to do first that she would like to do before she comes and present. So she's gonna reschedule for the, we're gonna reschedule her for our meeting on February thirteenth, okay? All right, so she will be rescheduled for the thirteenth. So that means the next item on the agenda is Mr. Nick Verret. I think someone who is not a stranger to any of us. Mr. Nick Verret, he's coming to discuss the pilot program for portable camera speed enforcement on streets within the, within the Natchitoches corporate limits. So, Nick?
Sir, appreciate the opportunity to talk with you this evening about the efforts of our local task force on what we call traffic calming, which is basically just trying to slow traffic down throughout our city. And so we have a recommendation that we want to present to you tonight, but we want to give you a little background information before we get to that this evening. As soon as Steve gets us up, there we go. So this is, this is our recommendation. Again, the background of this recommendation tonight is that late in two thousand twenty-one, late in two thousand twenty-one, the task force was formed by the mayor to look at the possibilities of what needed to be done to help control speeds. We realize we have motorists that do speed in a lot of our areas, it's very unsafe. And so we looked at different things that we were doing there. The task force members include two members of our city council. We appreciate the participation by Ms. Smith and Mr. P T. on this, as well as the rest of our task force. I don't know if any of the rest of them are here this evening. We did mention, ah, okay, good deal, Captain Johnson, great. I have, I'm the chair of that task force. We've met off and on for a couple of years now. One of the first things we did was to identify some of the streets where we felt like that speeding issues were occurring. And let's just kind of back up just a minute, and let's talk about why is speed, controlling speed, so important? It is very important because of the diagram. Steve, you'll go to the next one, please? At twenty miles an hour, a vehicle takes a hundred and fifteen feet in order to stop. And at that speed, if a pedestrian is struck, there's a thirteen percent chance that that pedestrian will suffer a fatality or serious injury. When the speed increases to thirty miles an hour, those numbers go from a hundred and fifteen feet for stopping distance to two hundred feet, and the percentage of fatalities or serious injuries to pedestrians increases from thirteen percent to forty percent. Increase by another ten miles an hour to forty miles an hour, and those numbers go up to over three hundred feet that it takes to stop, and seventy-three percent likelihood that a pedestrian who is struck by a vehicle traveling at forty miles an hour will be either killed or sustain a serious injury. So that's what we're trying to accomplish here. It's not, I'm gonna say it later, we're not here trying to make money. We're not trying to do any of those things as far as the task force. We're trying to look at what's the thing that we can do that will help safety across our city. So we did consider alternative countermeasures. Most of the things that we've talked about to date have been signing improvements, because we do have a lot of areas where we don't have signs that indicate speed limits. And some of the areas where we do have signs, those signs are not in good condition. Some of them are covered by vegetation and things like that. So right off the bat, we identified a lot of areas where we need to do some signing improvements. But then, late last year, back in September, we were introduced to a new technology that is portable camera speed enforcement. That effort began with a meeting with the mayor and Chief Collins with Emergent Enforcement Solutions. They then followed up with a meeting of the task force, and then the task force met in a follow-up meeting, go back, please, that on October the eleventh to consider, to just discuss the possibility of implementing this technology. Now, there's a lot of benefits that we found to this technology. For one thing, the mobile technology allows for deployment in various areas over time. It's not like these fixed cameras at intersections or fixed cameras on trailers or things like that that are only in one location. This, this technology can be moved around. One of the main benefits is the improvement of safety to police officers, because the officers do not have to get out of their vehicle in order to issue a citation, as is the case now. Also, in that regard, it decreases the likelihood of racial profiling or sexual harassment, because again, the officer is in a vehicle with a camera and not going to a vehicle and doing those things. The monthly cost of this program is offset. There's no actual investment on the city's part to participate in this, because the, the income that's from the program offsets the cost, even after the processing of administrative fees for processing of payments and things like that. One of the things that in other areas where they've deployed this type of technology, they've found that even having the signs that say photo enforcement in this particular area, even those signs help deter speeders. So that's a benefit as well. One of the options that we have is to implement a program of issuing warning tickets first for a period of time before we would actually issue citations that would, that would carry with it a monetary fine. Other municipalities that have used this technology over time have seen a decrease in the speeds of motorists, and it kind of makes sense. As word gets out, you know, people slow down if they know that this enforcement is going on in a certain area. One of the good things, too, in if this technology, the company that we were looking at here, supplies the officers that are certified in utilizing the technology, and that frees up the limited staff that Chief Collins has to do other things that maybe they can't do right now. So that's the technology itself. Now, Emergent Enforcement Solutions was the firm that we met with. If we contract with them, they provide a turnkey service, which would include the equipment, the officers, the vehicles, the electronic payment collection and tracking system, all of that. Again, there's no startup costs, and with contracting with this firm would allow us to discontinue this service anytime that we felt like we weren't really getting our money's worth. Again, that's really not costing us anything. And then Emergence Enforcement Solutions will produce a public awareness video prior to the implementation of the program, and it would be tailored to the city of Natchitoches. And that was one of the good things, we saw a sample of that that had been utilized in some other areas. So with all of that background, the task force tonight is recommending, and I realize this is not an agenda item for action tonight, but understand that we are recommending to the city council that you consider implementing a six-month program, a six-month program, which we're gonna call a pilot program. The thing about it, by saying it's a six-month program, is a pilot, it's not really locking us into anything in particular, but it gives us enough time to implement and to evaluate to see really if the program is effective at reducing speeding violations. And if our procurement policy would allow, we would recommend that we contract with Emergent Enforcement Solutions. We feel like they provide a very professional service. Now, I do want to make a disclaimer as I close, prepare to close out this presentation. The goal, from the standpoint of the task force, is not to make money. The goal of this program is to reduce speeds, which will improve safety to our citizens. Children, pets, anyone who lives near some of these and adjacent to some of these, basically what has become thoroughfares, speeding thoroughfares, it's, you're almost taking your life in your hands if you try to get out on the street. So that's, that's the bottom line for us. There may, there's some advantages and perhaps some funding that could be available to do some other things, but from the task force standpoint, we're only looking at this in terms of improving highway safety. Now, as an introduction to this, Emergent Enforcement Solutions has done some collection of baseline data in a couple of areas that we have targeted here. Kaiser Avenue being one of those. In the area around Walmart and the, the data, a six-day speed study was done, and the data is staggering, really. Out of the fifty-five thousand vehicles that traveled this part of Kaiser Avenue in a, in a weekly period back in, earlier in the month, and this is in a zone that's signed for thirty-five miles an hour speed. Of those fifty-five thousand vehicles, over fifteen percent of them were traveling eight miles an hour over the posted speed. An additional eight percent of those vehicles were traveling ten miles an hour over the posted speed, and an additional one and a half percent were traveling fifteen miles an hour over the posted speed. When you add all that up, it tells us that twenty-five percent of the vehicles traveling on Kaiser Avenue in that area where the, the camera was set up, twenty-five percent of those vehicles were traveling at least eight miles an hour over the posted speed of thirty-five miles an hour, and many of them, as many as fifteen miles an hour over the posted speed. Folks, that tells us we have a problem. With excessive speeds along Kaiser, for example, it's very difficult to have gaps in traffic, which allows folks on the side streets to be able to enter Kaiser Avenue. I know Ms. Smith has been very concerned about the access from Melrose Avenue, for example, but when you have the speeding traffic like that, it decreases the gaps that allow for traffic to enter the street. There was also, as part of the baseline data, the Highway One bypass at Natchitoches Central High School was just done very recently. Don't have all the particulars about the, the numbers per se, but suffice to say that in the thirty-five mile an hour school speed zone, the majority, the vast majority of traffic was traveling over six miles an hour above that, in other words, over forty-one miles an hour in the hours in which the school zone is posted. So we have some issues, and I think this is an opportunity to decrease those speeds and improve safety. Is Mr. Sarpy here this evening? Yes. Mayor, would we allow Mr. Sarpy to make some comments?
Yes, please, Mr. Sarpy.
Okay. So thank you for listening to this, and after Mr. Sarpy maybe follows up on some of this, we can maybe entertain some questions?
Yep, we'll, we'll, city council, ask questions.
Good evening.
Mr. Sarpy, I'm sorry, state your first and last name, and then you can get into your remarks.
Yes, sir, thank you. My name is Russell Sarpy. I am a retired law enforcement officer from North Louisiana. Spent about twenty-four years consecutively in federal-level narcotics investigation. Recently started a company doing traffic enforcement. We have several agencies that are already utilizing our services throughout the state. We have many, many, many more interested in the technology. The technology is, it's desirable at this time. The national census with traffic has shown that there is a problem since COVID, that the fatality rate has never been this high before, because people are driving at speeds that are record numbers. Part of the contribution to the high rates of speeds and high numbers of fatalities is that there's a low number of law enforcement officers coming into law enforcement. So throughout the entire state, there's a shortage of manpower, of officers, to go out and do effective traffic enforcement. Even in Troop E, you have eight troopers that cover ten parishes. There is no traffic enforcement being done. So we built a solution that not just provides a turnkey software solution, but we also recognize that you need help with manpower. So we have a recruitment system that's being done through North Louisiana. We partnered with the North Louisiana Crime Lab. We're actually housed at the new twenty-eight million dollar facility, Crime Lab. We're actually running the state queries that get the registration for the vehicles that are violating the traffic offense. They're all being run from that Crime Lab facility. So we're real good partners with the Crime Lab. Crime Lab provides forensic analysis for law enforcement agencies throughout the state. So we thought it was a fitting partnership for us to join forces with them. Towns like Ridgewood that are on our services, we are sustaining a seventy percent decrease in the number of speeders from the baseline. So in other words, when we started enforcement there, we created a baseline study, like Mr. Verret was talking about, and from that baseline, we've been able to sustain seventy percent of the speeders coming through that town. Now, that town sits, one sixty-five runs directly through that town. The speed limit there is fifty-five, and it's almost impossible for us to spend an eight-to-ten-hour day there now to write fifty tickets. Prior to this, we were writing or issuing out three hundred, three hundred and fifty tickets a day. So the system does work as Mr. Verret explained. That's pretty much it. Do you guys have any questions for?
City council, you got any questions for Mr. Sarpy? Mr. Sarpy, just, because there may be some questions. But, and you probably have said this, how long have you been doing this type of work?
Yes, sir, well, we've actually been in business for two and a half years.
Two and a half years, okay.
Yes, sir, and we started with three pilot agencies, which is Homer, Ringo, and Natchez. We no longer serve Natchez with our services anymore, but Homer and Ringo are still very good customers for us.
Okay. Yeah.
I've been asked. Yeah, I've been asked, and maybe you can state this for the record for those watching, how will the funds be collected and distributed? Can you?
Great question.
Expound on that.
Yes, ma'am. So we partnered with a second company that's been in business for over thirty years, which is Quick P D. Quick P D. has currently a hundred and seventy-five existing law enforcement customers throughout the state of Louisiana. One of their primary functions as a company is to provide a court management system and to also provide an online payment portal for the municipality. So each, each customer or municipality, Quick P D. through our partnership creates an online payment portal specifically for your municipality. So once the violations are sent out to the violators, they have the ability to go to the online payment portal and post their payment via credit card. We, we do not, as a company itself, touch any of that revenue. Quick P D. handles that revenue, and then they disperse that revenue weekly through a A C H. account that is set up for the municipality. So every week, every Thursday at ten thirty to eleven A M., there's a dispersment of the collected funds directly into your general fund account.
Any other questions from city council? Thanks, Ms. Russell.
How many cameras are you guys looking at?
So it's completely up to you guys. So we provide you with a turnkey solution for your municipality to determine, how do you want this deployed? We give you the data, we go out and analyze locations, determine what the actual problem is, and then we offer up cameras for you to reduce those numbers. So we can start with one camera, three cameras, ten cameras. It's kind of up to you guys based on the magnitude of the problem that you have.
Councilman P T. Harrington.
They'll answer my question, so.
Oh, he asked a question you wanted to ask. Okay. Y'all good? No questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Sarpy, also Nick Verret. And here's what I want to do, since it's not a voting item. If somebody else has a question for Sarpy or Verret, if y'all would just step out in the foyer, and if you don't mind doing that, so they can ask whatever questions they have to, okay?
I'm gonna hang around, so I'll be here for questions.
So if somebody indicates, I see Mr. Kevin has a question. So yeah, maybe Kevin, maybe you could ask as they go to the foyer, okay? All right. Thanks a lot, thanks for being here, really appreciate it. Okay. Moving to the next item on the agenda, which is an emergency ordinance, is read by Councilman Nielsen.
Thank you, Mayor. Emergency Ordinance Number Six of two thousand twenty-three. An emergency ordinance authorizing the city to undertake emergency sewer line repairs, to abandon an existing sewer line easement and to enter into a replacement sewer line easement across property at four oh one Jefferson Street. The above sewer line repairs being necessary to provide for uninterrupted sewer service and to protect private and public property, and authorizing the mayor to take immediate steps to enter into contracts, to relocate the existing sewer line and execute an instrument, abandoning the existing sewer right away and establishing a new sewer line, together with a declaration that said ordinance is an emergency ordinance under the authority of Article two dot one three of the chapter of the city of Natchitoches in providing for the effective date of the ordinance. Is this final or?
Yeah, yeah, it would definitely be final, because it's an emergency ordinance.
I move to adopt emergency ordinance number zero zero six of two thousand twenty-three.
I'm thinking.
Hey, motion has been made and seconded to adopt this emergency ordinance. Matt, and I don't know if there's any additional comment that you would like to make. I think everybody has seen on Facebook posts, and we sent out regroup messages and press releases. This is that area on Jefferson, also blocking off ambulance as we attended to the Sinco. Is there any comment outside of what was read? I think, I think it pretty much said everything.
Yeah, not really. I'd be happy to answer any questions anybody has about.
Okay, and I do have some images later on in a different presentation, just to kind of show, you know, this particular issue. We do. of show, you know, this particular issue. We do have Mr. Edwin Donahoe here. So, Steve, if you can cue us up for three minutes on the clock.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Donahoe, once he queues us up. Okay, he already got it. Steve?
Thank you, Mayor, and Councilman, and lady, Council ladies.
State your first and last name, please.
Yeah, Edwin Donahoe. I represent Mr. and Ms. Mork, who own the building, own the home at four oh one Jefferson. And they became aware of this problem through Ms. Marcia Graham, who is also here, who helps take care of their home a little bit over there. And she had contacted us, and then we met with the Morks. The, I don't think that anybody knew there was a sewer line that ran underneath where these folks had this house built. To my knowledge and what I'm told, there was no recorded easement placing this line at that location, and hence, the house was built on it without any knowledge of any problems. In fact, the line, I met with Mr. LaCass and visited with him a little bit, kind of cuts diagonally across the front yard of the property. Now, there've been, there's been extensive work, and on behalf of Mr. and Ms. Mork, they wanted me to express how much they appreciated the prompt action by the city to address this, because if any of you looked at it, the north wall, part of the north wall of the house had actually become unsupported and sunk down, and that type of thing. The, and if you want to see how big the line's going to be, look across from my house on Ambulance Street. We got some big pipes out there. And we've also got a temporary sewer pump in our front, right in our front yard, on the street, which bubbles all night long. But, having said that, the Morks want to cooperate in getting the city an easement, and as I understand it, will run along the west boundary of the property. And I don't know how deep it is, and I don't know, I don't know all the details. I don't know anybody that does completely, because nobody's broken ground at that point yet. But whatever they do, they view that they would, however this gets worked out with the city on an immediate basis, that they have reserved unto them whatever claims they may have for the damage to their home, to the damage to fixing their property, to the damage to repairing their home, or what that does to the marketability or fair market value of their home, once all this is over with. That's all that they want at this point. I think, I'm not trying to be a lawyer, but we got a good lawyer. But, you know, there are rights to be compensated for easements, there are rights to be compensated when people have damage to their homes and things like that. And we'll work with the city, however needs to be done, with that reservation being understood and verbalized or put down on paper somewhere. So, if anybody had any question, I'm glad to answer them.
Thank you a lot, Mr. Donahoe. All right.
Three minutes, you did it well.
Counsel, are there any-
Three minutes.
You did it.
Counsel, do you have any questions for Mr. Donahoe that you can think of?
No.
Any public questions for Mr. Donahoe?
Yes.
Do we, hey, do we need him to come? Yeah. You said we need to come to microphone? Yeah.
Three minutes. I think that-
State your name.
Carl Sias. This house, I probably need to ask Ed Lee. They had a problem with that sewer some years ago. Are you familiar with it?
I'm not. Maybe if you tell me a little more about it, it might-
They had some problem with that, that particular sewer that running close to those people's house. I'll pull it up if y'all want to see it and bring it to you all. That was a problem years ago, and they went down there and they patched that. And they know there was a problem way before now, and they didn't do anything about it, and they was, continued to patch that particular, because it's the main sewer line that runs all the way by those people's house. And it's been there, and it just got discovered there last week. So, I see the trucks down there fixing. I see everybody down there from the city doing what they're supposed to be doing, trying to at ease these people and everything else. But, that was a drain. That drain has been there for years and years.
All righty.
I don't know if that was a question.
Yeah, I don't think that was a question.
Just a statement. Just a statement.
All righty. Okay, thank you, Mr. Donahoe.
I will tell you, this problem is a massively effective traffic calming event on there. It's slowing everybody down.
Well, and I'll say this before we move to a vote, that Matt and I, along with Dziza, were working on a, so we're working on a press release to get out to kind of update the public. So, we don't, we're thinking, what are we saying, Matt, in the press release? We'll go ahead and tell them since they came to the meeting tonight.
All the material's supposed to be delivered by Friday.
Yep.
So, work will resume on Monday, all the heavy work. And I talked to the contractor today, and he said that once they start, they break ground, probably ten to fourteen days to have it complete.
Well, the only thing I would ask is that whatever, I know Mr. LaCass had said he has prepared a draft of an easement, that that be coordinated. I feel like comfortable, more comfortable dealing with your attorney, because it needs to be some language, I suggest, put in there to reserve these rights to Mr. and Ms. Mork. And I'll be glad to work with Mr. Washington. And since Mr. Mork, as I've said, is hospitalized right now, he's not available to, you know, visit or do anything like that. He's in hospital over here. Okay. So, I'm available anytime Mr. Washington wants to meet and visit, okay?
And we spoke before the meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sure did. Sure did. Thank you all.
Good. Thanks a lot, Mrs. Donahoe. All right, Mr. Stacy. Counsel, do y'all have anything else about this? Okay, Mr. Stacy, roll call vote.
Eli.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
PT.
Yes. All right, that motion carries, okay? Next item on the agenda is planning a zoning final. That's Councilwoman Washington, Eli.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number zero zero one of two thousand twenty-three, an ordinance, submitting an ordinance number sixty-four of two thousand and one by changing the zone classification properly described as follows. East and a half, block four and eleven block, A of Noggin South subdivision, and lot five and twelve, block A of Noggin South subdivision, Highway thirty-one-ten, whereas the planning commission of the city of Noggin State of Louisiana has recommended that the meeting of January the third of two thousand twenty-three, that the application of the Lighthouse Real Estate LLC to rezone the property described above from B three, commercial, to LA agriculture, to R three, multiple-family residents, to create student housing apartments, Highway thirty-one-ten of Noggin South subdivision be approved. This order was introduced on January the ninth of two thousand twenty-three and published in the Noggin time on January the twelfth of two thousand twenty-three. And I move to adopt resolution, correction ordinance number zero zero one of two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Is anyone here to speak on this agenda item? Oh, yeah. Good. As you make yourself to the microphone, sir, please state your, when you get to the microphone, state your first and last name, and see if you got us queued up.
Jim Davlin with Lighthouse Real Estate LLC. Just, if there's any questions for me, it would be the only reason I came up, so.
Thank you for being here. Counsel, you got any questions you can think of for, say your name again?
Jim Davlin.
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 Mr. Davlin.
Yes.
Okay. Any questions, comments?
No.
I got a question. Can you kind of describe the construction of the apartments that you're trying to do there?
Yes, sir. We, there's, as you can see there, there's multiple lots, and we just want it, we own that property. We just want to join it as one and get that reclassification. Looking at student housing there, and just, I mean, it'll be, it's four buildings, ten units per building, and any specific que, no, there's some green area with walking track or walking areas, things like that. We've more than enough parking provided by, you know, that needed to be, per the ordinance. Any specific questions?
Strictly for college kids, or?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah.
Now, at the last meeting, they said it would not be just for college kids. So, now tonight, you're saying it's just for college kids?
Yes, it will be.
It will be.
Any additional questions, counsel? Comments?
No.
Are there any public comments or questions for Mr. Davlin?
Got it, right. Thank you.
Seeing now, thank you for being here tonight. All right, seeing there's nothing else on the discussion. Mr. Stacy, roll call vote.
Eli.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
PT.
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. Next item on the agenda is an ordinance for final. There was some conversation, I know between Councilman Harrington and City Attorney Alex Washington, and even with the current owners. So, I don't know if that's something you all would like to share or state here on the record tonight, or how do you, basically how do you want to proceed?
I think Mr. Hutchinson is on speaker.
That's Mr. Hutchinson?
Yes.
You got us, Steve?
State your name.
Yeah, state your first and last name.
You'll have to pardon me a little bit. I have a little laryngitis, okay?
Okay.
So, Honorable Mayor and council members, we had some unusual circumstances that just came up briefly right before the meeting.
Could you state your first and last name for us before you go any further?
Don Hutchinson.
Okay, thank you, sir. You may proceed.
And we had, the Honorable Mayor and council members, we had some unusual circumstances that just came up prior to the meeting. And I would just like to let you know that, for the time being, we would like to withdraw the motion.
Okay.
That's okay.
Withdraw the item from the agenda. Okay. We don't need any motion or anything, do we, Alex?
We don't.
Okay. All right. You know how to reach us, Ms. Kathy Davis. We've been talking throughout the process, so just give us a, if anything changes, you know, I know you're being in contact with us.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Appreciate it.
Thank you all for being here, okay? All right. Thanks a lot. All right, they withdrew that motion. I'm sorry, that agenda item, that ordinance. All right, next item on the agenda is then a motion to take ordinance number zero eight-six from the table?
I make a motion to remove ordinance zero eight-six from the table and put it on the agenda.
Motion's been made and seconded to take ordinance number zero eight-six from the table into the agenda. It was tabled for a couple of reasons in our January ninth meeting. So, it's just, I think we've addressed those matters, and so, the motion is being made to put it back on the agenda. Comments or questions, counsel? Any public comments or questions about this? All right, seeing now, Mr. Stacy, roll call vote.
Eli.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
PT.
Yes.
All right, Steve, there is a different PowerPoint I think I sent over. Yeah, if you can get that queued up for us real quick, and as Steve is getting that, just want to, I think this is a good time to just remind us, we do have the three minutes per speaker. If there is something that is stated that you, you know, agree with that's already been stated, we ask not, you know, we ask that you just be courteous and thoughtful about that and not repeat the same thing that has already been repeated. We do have it recorded on tonight. Now, we're gonna, I've asked even the department heads who are speaking to abide by the three-minute rule. I will, and I hope you understand, I will give elected officials a little bit more latitude. But, everybody wants you to abide by the three-minute rule here. I want to start off with this opening, then we've got some others who are going to say some things. Safer Noggin Initiative is what I want to call this. Safer Noggin Initiative. Steve, you can move on. Hit that first bullet point, Steve. All right, the proposed package that we're going to see, and I know it's been some discussion, it will allow us not only to maintain our current menu of services, but will enable us to provide better services to Noggin residents. That's really what this is all about, providing better services to the Noggin residents. The next point, Steve. In the spring of two thousand twenty-two, we received, and correct me if I'm wrong about this, Matt, but I think it was spring twenty-two, we received an administrative order from the Louisiana Department of Health giving us certain demands regarding our aging water infrastructure. I think Matt noted this in some previous comments, but I'm about right. Nineteen sixty, plant one, around nineteen seventy-one or so, plant two, plant three, nineteen ninety-five. We have three plants, all right? The goal is to try to get an additional plant in the rehab plant three, which does vitally need some enhancements. I actually have a copy of that administrative order. If anybody wants to see it, I brought about thirty copies with me. I've got two pages. Counsel, you received this back when we sent it out, or not we, who's in the Department of Health. So, it's basically, they wrote us up, saying we got to do certain things. Let me say this on the record. Matt and his group did a phenomenal job in meeting what they could. And I'm saying what they could because there are some things beyond their control. We have to have the money to do the rest, right? But, when you talk about the water operators, Matt, who is the utility director, also people like Boukhar, who is in administration, there were some other folks as well. These folks were, I don't know if you still are, but they were working weekends, I mean, Matt as a director was working weekend shift work like some of the other folks. So, that was to satisfy that part of the administrative order. But, I just want to share, and again, I do have copies. We can get those copies to you. We've got some firemen and police officers here. I'm sure somebody doesn't mind disseminating those who want to see it. But, it says, "By July thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three, respondents shall comply with the following order, order remedial action," and it has several things, it has A, B, C, D, all right? It says, "Inspect and clean, remove accumulated sludge, inspect, clean, repair, replace the flooring." But then, D is the big one. I'm gonna just skip to D. "Install additional plant capacity to provide proper maintenance and repairs at the Noggin water system, and shall meet the state and federal regulations by operating a design as designed and as permitted by LDH." Again, I have two copies that show that. They're two separate copies, but they're both pointing to the administrative order that's right up from the state. There's another point I'd like to make, and I want to pass it off to one of the department heads. The Safer Noggin Initiative is to provide water to residents and businesses. We have safe water. We have good water, and we're going, Matt and I haven't even discussed this just yet, but they started this grading of our system, and we recently got a grade. But, I haven't really gotten into all of that and deciphered all of the information. But, we must install additional plant capacity. Simply, this means we must become capable of producing more water. We must become more capable. Another point that Matt makes, I think that's really interesting, is that the last plant we had was plant three. It was built in nineteen ninety-five. We haven't added capacity in a significant manner. I mean, we're working on this well now, but we haven't added water since nineteen ninety-five. So, we're talking about almost thirty years ago. And another point that is often made, we didn't have Alliance Compressors in ninety-five. We didn't have all of the hotels on the interstate. We didn't have Chick-fil-A, Arby's, Whataburger, you know, all these other things that have developed, the auto mall. Some of these don't use as much water, but there are also some subdivisions that weren't built at that time that are in existence now. So, I think we pretty much get the point. Nineteen ninety-five is the last time we built infrastructure. We've grown since then, and to keep that growth, we're gonna have to keep up with the water, water capacity. The other part of Safer Noggin Initiative has been well documented that crime has increased all over the United States, including but not limited, hear it one more time, Steve, included but not limited to our beautiful city of Noggin. I've got some stats somewhere that Chief Collins sent me, and I'm not going to- I've got some stats somewhere that Chief Collins sent me, and I'm not gonna read all of this. But if we look at homicides by shooting, in two thousand eighteen, you had two. Uh, two thousand, and this is as of October, but I think we added one since October, right? Uh, two thousand eighteen, there were two, two thousand nineteen, there were three, two thousand twenty, there were three, two thousand twenty-one, there were five, and two thousand twenty-two, there were at least eight murders here in the city of Natchitoches, approaching double digits. I'm glad we then reached double digits, but we were approaching double digits. There's also some other information here, um, in theft interior of vehicle. You had two oh six in two thousand eighteen, you had one fifty-four in nineteen, one thirty in twenty twenty, one ninety-six in twenty twenty-one, two hundred and sixty-four theft of interior of the vehicle, um, last year in twenty twenty-two. One more stat, illegal use of a weapon. You had one fifty-eight in two thousand eighteen, in two thousand nineteen, you had one ninety-eight. Two thousand, uh, twenty, you had two thirteen, twenty-one, you had two seventy-six. Last year, you had three oh five. Three hundred and five illegal use of a weapon, all right? Uh, there's another couple of points, Steve, then I'll pass the microphone on. Natchitoches Fire Department, we've got a few of them, them here as well, as long with N P D. Uh, Natchitoches Fire Department has worked extremely hard to achieve a two rating. Some of you don't know what that mean. I don't fully understand it all, but, uh, I know this, that a five is the worst, and as you go down, one is the best. Our fire department worked their butts off to get us to a two. And we're not just a two. We're a very strong two, like almost a one. And so having more stable fire workforce will undoubtedly help us to consistently achieve that highest rating possible, which is of a one, all right? And what that means to you and your pocketbook, that means, uh, better insurance rates. That's what it really boils down to. So, um, one more, one more deal, more water plus safer streets equals safer Natchitoches, all right? Um, next slide. How do we get there? Uh, Clarissa Brown Smith, and Steve, we, I, I told them all three minutes. Um, so, uh, we, we got a few slides, and we, we wanna hold everybody, like I said, I'm giving elected officials a little bit more latitude. I think we understand that. But, um, the next few slides are gonna be Clarissa, then we're gonna throw it to Ed, then Matt is gonna comment, then we'll have the chiefs eventually say something as well. Go ahead, uh, uh, I'm sorry, Clarissa.
No, 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 good evening, everyone. I'm gonna talk really, really fast. Um, so I proposed rate adjustments. Um, at the previous meeting, you know, we talked about, uh, raising our rates, uh, from one point, to one point five additional cents uh, for electricity, uh, two dollars for the base of water and sewer, and then a two-dollar variable rate uh, for everything used over two thousand gallons, uh, per thousand gallon for water and sewer. So we, um, definitely heard the comments that were made, and we wanted to, first of all, clarify some things to make sure that everybody had a great understanding of what our proposed, uh, adjustments were, and then also inform you of some changes that were made. So again, we were looking at one point five cents increase on the electricity rate. So what we, we did, we went back and looked at the numbers, and, uh, one of the most important things that came in that short two-week period was, when we were looking at our water treatment plant, we were looking at about a one point two million dollar payment per year to fund the rehab of the water treatment plant. And, uh, we were looking at one particular financing avenue. So what we were able to do was go back to our, uh, other, um, opportunities, and we were able to look at the revolving loan fund, um, and they had a much lower annual payment. And that allowed us to lower, uh, the adjustments that we were initially proposing. So initially, again, that we were looking at one point two million per month to support the funding for our water treatment plant. Now we're looking at five hundred and fifty thousand dollars per month, so a substantial decrease.
Per year.
Per year, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I misstated that.
A whole lot of money.
That's an expensive water system. No, but, uh, per, per year. So we were able to go in and save about seven hundred thousand dollars. So we definitely went, uh, back and did some homework and put forth a great effort to get that reduced. And because of that, instead of proposing a one point five cent increase, uh, on the electricity, we were able to drop it down to one point two. Um, with a one point two, um, increase on electricity, and then still looking at a two-dollar base rate increase with the water and sewer, and then the two-dollar user rate, uh, per gallon for water and sewer. And what, and with water and sewer, just want to make sure that everybody has a great understanding is that we wanted to make sure that that was not a, um, large hit on those low users, and that's one of the things that we took into consideration heavily. So that's why we're, uh, looking at this tier approach where, um, the users that are only using about two thousand gallons, which is about forty percent of our constituents, would only see a two-dollar increase on their water and sewer uh, on both sides versus what, um, we were originally looking at. So definitely wanted to make sure that the impact was a lot less.
We'll, we'll give Clarissa some more time, I think.
I'm sorry, it's in three minutes already?
I, I wanna, I want a time, everybody, to help us kind of keep, keep track.
Okay, okay.
But certainly, you, you have some things you need to say, and we understand.
I do, and I'm so sorry, I'm gonna move very quickly. You can tell I did a little homework, huh?
Yeah, yeah.
So, uh, those are our proposed increases. So my next couple of slides is gonna tell you what those increases would do for the city, um, and our constituents. So you can go to the next slide. Okay, you can click real, real fast and pull up all the information. Okay, I'll go back. So for the one point two, uh, cent, uh, adjustment on our, uh, electricity rate, we will generate additional revenue of two point four million dollars, which will have an average increase per household of thirteen dollars. And when we say average, we want to make sure that we, everybody has a great understanding that that is every household in the city. Um, when you're looking at some of your smaller, um, homes, um, you are maybe looking at about a ten-dollar increase on your monthly bill, and then if you're looking at larger homes, which inevitably uses more water, uh, more than likely, you'll be looking at maybe twenty-four, twenty-five-dollar increase per month, uh, on your utility rates. So, uh, with the water rate adjustment, you can click, keep clicking a couple of times, Steve. Uh, with, just with the water, you will have an additional revenue of nine hundred and eight thousand dollars, uh, which has an average, uh, increase per household of seven dollars per month. Again, over forty percent of our households use two thousand or less per month, so you would only see a two-dollar increase on your monthly, uh, bill. Same, and the sewer is gonna mirror that, so you can click really quickly. So as you can see, sewer will generate, because we don't, everybody that has water is not on our sewer, but, uh, about sixty percent of those folks are. So we have about six hundred and forty-five thousand dollars that we would generate additional, uh, through the increase. Uh, and again, forty percent of our constituents would only see, um, a two-dollar increase on the sewer. Now, this is, um, the next slide, I think, is what we wanted to make sure that, um, we kind of went over in detail. We are doing a two, two-year implementation period, so half of these increases will go in May first, twenty twenty-three. The other half will be, uh, May first, twenty twenty-four. And at the end of that process, uh, we will be looking at electricity rate of three point nine cents per kilowatt hour, um, eleven fifty on the base rate for, uh, water, eleven fifty on the base rate for sewer, and then a variable rate for both of those of seven dollars. Go to the next slide. So proposed use of additional funds, so you can, uh, roll them all up, thank you. Um, so the proposed use of these additional funds, one thing that we wanted to make sure is that we did, we definitely attached these increases to some type of, um, operational enhancement. So first of all, water treatment plant, which is very important, uh, we are gonna allocate five hundred and fifty thousand dollars of that additional revenue per year. Uh, salary increases, which I know that is one thing that we talked about in depth last time, uh, to raise salaries to a more, um, marketable level, uh, it is gonna take us about one point seven million dollars, including their retirement contributions, to be able to do that, which we are very, um, excited that we may have that opportunity. So for fire, um, to raise it to eleven dollars is gonna take us seven hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars to do that. For police, um, to raise them to sixteen dollars, and that's the minimum, is gonna, um, cost us six hundred and forty thousand. And to, uh, correct the marketing analysis for non-silver service, it'll cost us three hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. So collectively, it'll be one point seven million dollars, uh, to fund those salary increases, which is the bulk of, honestly, the bulk of what the adjustment, uh, the utility adjustments will bring in. Of course, we talked about the inflation rates and how the cost of operational items are, uh, skyrocketing, and so we definitely wanted to allocate some of those additional revenues to the utility supply costs that we've seen, uh, kind of go out the roof a little bit. Matt may want to speak about that, but it has increased dramatically over the year. Um, I may just mention the, uh, last meeting, I think, but we are about ninety-six percent of allocated, uh, budget for supplies, and we still have four months to go. So we'll have to come back and make some type of budget adjustment to fund, um, our utility costs.
Can you explain what that means, Clarissa?
So what it means is that we, we budgeted, ju- you know, just to make it simple, we budgeted a million dollars. We're at about nine hundred and ninety thousand, and you still have, uh, four months to go, which we were, on average, we were spending about three hundred thousand a month on utility materials. This is nothing, you know, fluff, this is no luxury, this is just materials that we need to function day-to-day. Um, I think I have one more, um, yep, there we go. So we definitely want to look at, again, as well, our sustainability for our water and sewer. Utility, of course, is generating enough funds to, um, self-sustain, so they're covering all of their expenses. But we do, we do show that there is a shortage with the, uh, increase in cost on water and sewer in operating those functions. There is, there has been some increased cost. So we're looking at allocating about nine hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars back to water and sewer to help them sustain their operations, make the proper enhancements, and timely maintenance on, uh, the plants. So I think that is all for me.
Hey, Steve, real quick, go back for me, and we'll certainly allow questions. So let's make sure, uh, we only have one microphone here, and I say that, we've got many, but I mean that to mean only one person talking at a time, that we'll be opportunity for people to ask questions, things like that. Steve, if you would click on water treatment plant, uh, that's gonna be my hyperlink video. Um, yeah, I, this is one I actually shared with a group that was here before, and that's dealing with the water treatment. We may have to bypass the little ad real quick, okay? So, uh, look at that. Okay, you might have to Ctrl K it. Yeah, you might have to go back to the presentation, maybe Ctrl K, or? Okay, all right.
If you're paying over eighty dollars a month for car insurance, and you don't know this, I guarantee you're losing money. So there's a comparison shopping site that finds you lower.
In Jackson, Mississippi, school drop-off isn't just for the kids, it's also for the water. The entire city is facing a boil water notice, again.
We're told, don't wash your hair with the water, don't brush your teeth with the water.
Lakeisha Galilan worries about her eight-year-old.
Is she gonna walk over to a water fountain and drink from that water fountain?
To be safe, signs are up at the middle school. They've been there a long time.
You can't remember a time when the kids could use the water fountains in the school?
I can't remember, honestly, can't remember.
George Stewart has taught here for six years, a predominantly black, low-income school. On top of all the other challenges, water quality and water pressure are a constant battle.
At one point, we had to shut down for about two weeks.
When?
Uh, this was like, maybe like a year or two ago.
In the middle of the pandemic?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Class went virtual, kids fell further behind.
We have many students who, um, consider some of our most vulnerable students, who, um, virtual learning does not help them at all.
The problem here, like so many other places, is failing infrastructure.
This is one of two water treatment facilities in Jackson, and the one largely to blame for the most recent citywide boil water notice, and officials still can't tell people when the water will be safe to drink again.
In twenty twenty, an EPA report cited a long list of problems with the water system, including failure to replace lead pipes, faulty monitoring equipment, inadequate staffing.
There's been a failure to recognize this as a, uh, unified problem, you know, as, as a problem, both on the state, uh, and even at times, the federal level, understanding that we lived in, in aging, uh, America.
Shoquay Antarlamumba is Jackson's mayor.
If I could write you a check right now to fix the problem, how big would that check have to be?
For the water system alone, it, it would have to be, uh, in excess of more than, than two hundred million dollars.
Pastor C J Rhodes, father of twins, has watched many in Jackson lose faith in their leaders.
I don't think our congregation is the only one that feels that way. You talk to people all across, uh, the city, many are livid, many want to vote people out.
Not far from the surface, concerns that racial inequities could be to blame.
I am concerned about, uh, my city, uh, filled with residents that look like me. I think this is an opportunity to change the narrative of what Mississippi is known for.
And that can start, he says, by providing the most basic of needs, water. Stephanie Gosk, NBC News, Jackson, Mississippi.
I think we see the point, it's.
Thanks for watching our YouTube channel, follow today's tops.
Yeah, as you get back.
In Jackson, Mississippi.
You might want to pause, yeah, yeah, okay. Yeah, so I think we, we, we understand the similarities. Aging infrastructure was a key theme through that. Obviously, we have aging infrastructure. Just ignoring it won't make the, won't mean the problem goes away. Doing nothing won't, that doesn't mean it gets better. It's like that vehicle that's making noise, eventually gets going to land you on the side of the road if you do nothing about it. Okay? All right, thank you, Clarissa. Again, we'll allow questions for Clarissa, so if you take notes, jot them down, we'll allow questions for her later on. Next up is Ed Lee, uh, I think, Steve, if you get to that next slide. Mm-hmm. Ed Lee, Director of Purchasing, he's gonna talk about the impact of inflation on city financing, on, on city finances. And let's, Steve, let's see how Ed does with the three minutes. I'm curious.
I didn't do it.
You know, I'm curious, I'm curious here. All right, Ed.
Okay, I was waiting, Steve, you get the, does he have the spreadsheets on there, or do I just need to go off?
Oh, they're on here, yeah.
Okay, well, I can't, let's see which one that is.
That's the, that's the fuel cost right there, Ed.
Okay, so, all right, I don't have that one, but, but I have it on a spreadsheet. Okay, what I did is I put together a, um, you know, the more continuous items that we use on a daily and regular basis, not the one-time things, uh, such as fuel costs. You can see fuel cost in twenty twenty was two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, and you skip to two thousand twenty-two is five hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. And this is fuel that goes in, everything the city has for fuel, whether it's a fire truck, police car, bucket truck, tractor, and you can see it has nearly doubled from two, two seventy-five, actually, it's, yeah, nearly doubled, two seventy-five to five hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. And that's on the same income, the same rates that we have been collecting money from all these years. So, you know, that's a, that one item alone is hard to swallow.
Is there any way around paying for fuel, Ed?
Well, we've had, you know, at our department head meetings, we, we've discussed it, we've gone, uh, made recommendations even to ask people when they stop their vehicle, and if you're gonna be idling for more than two or three minutes, shut it off. Don't, don't leave it running to run into the office and grab something, or, uh, if you're talking to somebody. So we tried to get people to cut back on, uh, fuel costs. Even out at my department, if you pull in the garage and purchasing, you'll see signs, metal signs that we put up on the side of the building that says, "Do not leave, um, your vehicle idling." So when you park your vehicle, you turn it off. So we were doing lots of things like that to reduce costs.
Okay. Hit the next one, Steve. He covered the fuel cost. This is caustic soda.
Okay. Let's see, I have caustic here. Caustic soda, I went back to January first of twenty twenty, we were paying eleven point seven, point one one seven five cents per pound. You can see now it's point two six five zero per pound, so that's twenty-six and a half cents. Our total cost, based on seven hundred thousand pounds estimated per year, went from seven, I'm sorry, eighty, eighty-two thousand, one hundred and eighty-five thousand, so it's a hundred and three thousand dollar increase just on caustic soda for the water plant. And again, we're still using the same rates that we've been using all these years. These are not one-time things, these are items that we use on a continuous basis. And I don't know when the rates are gonna stop going up. I mean, this is a snapshot as it is now, I don't know what the future holds for it.
I'm sorry, yeah.
Liquid chlorine?
Yeah, you have chlorine, go ahead and do chlorine too.
Okay.
Chlorine should be in that guy.
Sim- similar story on the chlorine. In two thousand twenty, we were paying seven hundred and ninety-six dollars a ton, now we're paying two thousand two hundred ninety-one dollars per ton. Uh, the total impact over a year's time goes from fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred, to a hundred and seventy-one thousand, eight hundred and twenty-five dollars. a hundred and seventy-one thousand, eight hundred and twenty-five dollars. So you're talking a hundred and twelve thousand dollars, again, new money that we have to find to pay the bills to keep the water plant running. Just don't, this is just on chemicals.
And I do have those documents that Ed, and one thing we didn't put on the PowerPoint is utility poles, they've gone up dramatically. I have copies of that here. Utility poles, utility wire. I'm thinking we're seeing an increase in everything you provided, right?
I can tell you a little bit about those if you want.
Okay, yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Wooden utility poles, we have, we have various different, various lengths, thirty-five, forty, sixty, and even others. I just put the more commonly used poles on this list. For example, a thirty-five-foot pole from 2020 went from a hundred and two dollars and fifty cents per pole to a hundred and thirty-five. That's really not a big increase, but the other poles get more costly. A forty-foot pole goes from one eighty-five, fifty to four hundred and twelve dollars per pole. A sixty-foot pole is five hundred and fifty dollars up to eight hundred and ten dollars. And we go through poles on a regular basis, whether we're replacing poles that have been in the ground a long time and are rotting due to age, or vehicles hit them. Unfortunately, vehicles hit poles on a fairly regular basis, and that's only the beginning of that cost. Then the utility crews come out, and it's usually hot hours of the night, weekends, and you use all the equipment and all the different parts that go with it, transformers that's on the pole. So it's a big expense when somebody just hits a utility pole. We do try to get money back if the driver has insurance. We always go that, go that route to do whatever we can to recoup our money, but it's, it's not always possible. On the wire, we have, on the overhead wire, we have different sizes. One-O wire in 2020, this is per reel, one thousand, three hundred and forty-nine dollars to four thousand and ninety-five dollars. Four-O quad reel of that went in 2020, two thousand, two hundred and nine dollars to four thousand, five hundred and forty-four. On utility wire underground, the one-O triplex goes from nine hundred and twenty a reel to twelve hundred and forty. Three-fifty triplex is one thousand, nine eighty-eight to two thousand and ninety-four. Not a big number, but it's an increase. But then the one-O primary goes from four thousand, eight hundred and ninety-nine dollars for a reel, all the way up to eleven thousand, five hundred and thirty-five dollars. And again, these are the things that, the more expensive items that we use on a regular basis, it's not special money we need for a project. This is day-to-day use, and then we have all the things that go along with it that have increases as well, such as anything from nuts and bolts to various electrical and plumbing and sewer parts. So everything is, it's increasing, and not only is it increasing, some of these things are hard to get. So you're having to, anytime you see something that you normally would buy one or two of, if you come across it and you can get five or six, we might need to get five or six just because you don't know when you'll be able to get it again.
Thanks a lot, Ed, for that. Again, these, this is all proof up here, folks. Everything Ed said, from the chlorine, the caustic soda, to the utility poles, that we have all that documentation if you want to grab that before you leave. All right, Matt, and if we want to try Matt, I think Matt's going to do it. So the, kind of the, what we're seeing, why we've seen some increases already, just to say the point, the city hasn't made any increase, but there's been a nationwide factor. So Matt's going to talk about that just a little bit.
Yeah, I just want to talk a minute about why our electric bills have gone up over the past, especially over the past two years. Steve, can you show the slide that is labeled EIA?
It might be the first one. Oh, you probably just click it. Yeah. Mm-hmm. Oh, that's not.
Okay, we'll start with that one. That shows our CLECO load over the past, since 2015, I believe, until now. So you see the peaks and valleys. The peaks are going to be when we are using the most electricity, our businesses and our households. That's normally in the summertime, and then the valley is wintertime. If you, you can see from this that we really haven't sold any more electricity last year than we sold seven years ago. That being said, that the money that the electric department operates off of is based on how many kilowatt-hours we sell. So even like Ed spoke of, the prices of everything doubling, our revenue has not doubled because we are not selling any more electricity. Our usage has remained pretty consistent for the past seven years. Okay?
Yeah, let's see, okay, CLECO fuel rate.
Okay. Now, this is, this is one reason that our electric bills have gone up, and that's not just the city, it's SWECO, CLECO, Entergy, all of them.
Nationwide.
That's based on fuel rate. So this is a slide showing from that same time period how the fuel rate has increased dramatically, especially in the last two years, year and a half. So that, that is a graph showing the fuel costs that we pay CLECO every month for the fuel that is used to produce electricity, and that is reflected in our customers' PCA So for years, we were experiencing very low natural gas rates, and we can see in the past year and a half, it's just really skyrocketed. It's tripled almost. Now, this is the bill PCA, so, so this is the bill that we pass along to the customers, and you can see it mirrors the fuel charge. So when the fuel charge from CLECO is high, the corresponding PCA will be high. So those, those two graphs mirror each other, which they should. Okay, Steve, go to the last one. Okay, so this is, this is, I got this graph off of the EIA, which is the Energy Information Administration. It's a federally, it's a federal program. This website is run by the federal government. So this shows nationwide average fuel costs for natural gas, which is the main fuel to generate electricity. So as you can see, the fuel costs from the EIA report mirror the CLECO and the PCA charge. So it all corresponds to the price of natural gas. When natural gas is cheap, electricity is cheap. Natural gas is expensive, electricity is expensive. The good news is it has, I attended the LEPA meeting last week, and the fuel, and that chart kind of shows that we lag behind that because of our billing. The fuel price is starting to show some recovery, it's coming down some.
Awesome.
We'll make our PCA's lower.
Awesome. And thanks for explaining that matter. I think Matt got, he just got right there. We'll give him, he did good. The next, next slide, I think, how about we have Chief Wynn first, and then Chief Collins? And yeah, Jeffrey, give me three minutes now.
Good evening. Guys, just, I had a big, long speech prepared, but since we got three minutes, I'm just going to throw, throw a few things at you. The end of the road, guys, is right there. We all talk about kicking the can down the road. The fact of the matter is they're addressing some issues that should have been addressed a long time ago. It's time to address them now, and that's what they're trying to do. Our policemen, our police and fire need this. We need to retain our people. In the next five to six years, we have a total of one hundred and seventy-six years of experience that's fixing to leave the fire department. I don't know if you understand what that means. We're fixing to have a lot of people leave with a lot of good experience. We're not paying wages to attract new, new help that want to come here and stay. Guys, for the fire department, we're an all-hazards department. We're not just a fire department. We don't just put water on the fire. We've got divers, we've got hazmat techs, we've got bomb techs, all that goes into that, and it costs money to send these, to send these guys to school, but it also costs money to attract and keep these people here. We need to quit training people and sending them off for other departments. We need to keep them here. And that's, that's just the fact of the matter. It's time to fix the problem, and I think that's what we're trying to do.
You left a little time. Good? Thanks, Chief Wynn. And Chief Wynn has asked Chief Collins, both are great advocates for their respective departments. All right, reset it for us. Steve, and Chief Collins of the Nagades Police Department.
Thank you, thank you. And first of all, thank you, Mayor, Council, and those present. I just want to cover real quickly a few numbers. One hundred and thirty-eight, that's the number of people that have resigned since 2000. Twenty-five, that's the number of people we've had to terminate because they just weren't good police officers and they weren't serving our community. Twenty-one have retired, and that's a goalpost that we want to have our people achieve. For all those individuals standing in the back, I give them kudos for the fact that they came here to our department, they put on that badge and that gun and serve in their capacity each and every day, knowing that that day that they go out may be their last day. We know, as law enforcement and public safety in general, we're not going to become rich doing the job that we're doing. But all that we've asked for each and every time that we come to work, we hope and aspire that the public realizes the need for law enforcement, as we see when we hear the shots fired and the increase in violent crime everywhere. I think Director LaCaz pointed out, in several different cities, they had mass shootings. We were fortunate in each and every day that we have that to at least go to bed and know that we didn't have that happen in our community, that's great. But we have to have law enforcement. Out of the seventy employees that I have at my department, thirty-nine of them have less than ten years of experience. Let me, let me sum that up for you. That means that's fewer people knowing what to do, they don't have the experience, they don't have the knowledge or the support of those members in the community, so they have to learn and go into those communities and meet those people and get that interaction. We're working on that. We're developing programs where we are trying to do more in the communities. We also have, working in partnership with the Sheriff's Office, we're trying something different. We're lacking the officers. We can't just throw our hands up and go hide, so we're doing what's known as action. That's us getting out there, trying to target these specific individuals that are causing havoc in our communities, and that's what our biggest problem is among the crime element. We have individuals we can't put away due to restrictions outside of our control. When you look at the peaks in crimes, certain crimes like the burglaries that are being perpetrated by juveniles, those are conditions outside of Nagades' hands. We can't control that, but we can at least enforce it, work with our partners, and try to solve that. But what I'm asking, and of course, Chief as well, is for you to actually take in consideration. Since 2018, that was the last time a raise was given to our police officers, and that was to bring them from twelve dollars an hour to thirteen an hour. They had to sacrifice a position since when I came on and they passed a crime safety tax that hired on fifteen officers, I was among the fifteen that were hired on. There are two of us left, Lieutenant Mezier and myself, and that's because we chose to stay here. The other ones, they, they learned, they grew, they got the experience, and then they left and went to other agencies. Recently, we've lost, just in a matter of, 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 just a handful of, of months, several individuals who are going and seeking other employment purely on the fact that they want to make more. They're doing so much, but they're like, I can go here and make more and do less. So the ones that are here, they deserve our respect. I give them all my, my respect as far as them putting on that uniform and doing that job and hoping and praying that someone will at least consider that and keep that in mind. They're going to do their jobs because that's what they took the oath to do, and they will continue to serve and protect, but I just ask that you actually consider helping those individuals out with being able to provide them a livable wage.
Right. Thanks a lot, both chiefs, for your remarks. Okay? All right, I think next I have a few comments I want to say, and I, I try not to be long. I gathered a couple images. This one here, U.S. inflation, the food staples, so we're seeing, no doubt, we're seeing really increases almost all over the map. You know, eggs, butter, food, flour, chicken, milk, baby food, you know, vegetables, we're seeing it. All right? Hit it again, please. This one here shows, this kind of shows that there are a few areas where you're seeing a reduction, like television, toys, but for the most part, healthcare has skyrocketed. I think that's over two hundred, close to two hundred and twenty-five percent. College tuition, a two-hundred percent increase. College textbooks, childcare. Oh, it even has average hourly earnings there has increased. And so the thing about that, as other people increase, we, we want alliances to increase, we want pick-ups to increase, but as they do increase, it makes it more competitive for our workforce here that provides services to the Nagades residents, and it makes it more compelling to them, hey, I mean, I know this is a quiet part, shouldn't say the quiet part aloud, but it makes them say, hey, why don't just go somewhere else? And for public safety, I don't have to run into a fire, because I sign these things all the time, firemen going, and they have to go to the hospital because of some heat exhaustion or some heat-related deal. You know, officers, police officers, you know, different nature, but, but same thing. All right? So we are seeing increases everywhere, and that's no doubt. And Ed laid out what we're experiencing in terms of increases, that, things that we have to pay for. I mean, there's no alternative to caustic soda. We can't say, well, no caustic soda in your water for the next two, six months. We can't get the great value chlorine. It's not available. It is a bid process, but we have to pay what the lowest bid, and the lowest bid has gone up. So when I think about this, hit it again for me, Steve. I think about this, this is really just, this is, this is numbers, this is math. Nobody, and I don't speak for the council all the time, but I can speak for the council and myself here, when I say we have approached this matter with extreme caution and extreme hesitancy, because we do realize the consequences thereof. But the alternative would be Jackson, Mississippi. The alternative, I believe, is worse than what this proposal is. I believe the alternative is worse. This is just some town halls. We did seven town halls. Steve knows, because he went to every last one of them. He had to haul the projector and everything around. Randy was certainly at the last three, because he had his, his folks put up these little cards back here. This is from one of the last three. So this is at Weaver Elementary, because I don't want anybody to say that at the last meeting that this was some secret, you know, under a rock type thing, let's, let's not talk about this in public. We did town halls, not just in this building, but we took it to you. And we didn't do it at five o'clock, we did it at six-thirty. So the department heads had to come back. So the first one was at the brewery, I don't have a picture of that. Then we went to First Baptist Amulab. The brewery was the best-attended one. Then we went to East Nagades, you know, then we had two here, and then we had, you know, this is Weaver. The next slide is us at First Baptist Amulab. So the people you see there, I was hoping it would be more people from the community, but each time we averaged maybe three, four people from the community. And again, we publicize this. We came to an area saying, hey, we're, options are looking real, real tight here, and this is something that we're basically bound to do based on what needs to happen with water treatment and also making Nagades a safer place. We tried to look at every option. We started this conversation in spring of 2021. It's almost spring 2023, so this hasn't been a rush. And if there were another option, we would rush to another option. So we tried to look at all of these angles. Hit the other slide. Water rates by nearby towns, this is two thousand rates. I just want to make sure everybody has the full information. Hit it a few times, Steve. Paul Haddon is thirty-six dollars, thirty-six dollars for water. I don't know if there's sewer as well, Matt. Is sewer in that price?
Probably not.
I know you're not over their system, so this could be only water and sewer is not accounted, so sewer would be an additional. But again, don't necessarily quote us on that. But it's thirty-six in Paul Haddon. Roboline is thirty-four dollars for that two thousand base rate. Natchez is twenty-five dollars. Clarence is twenty-six dollars. Camptee is twenty-four-twenty, and Nagades is nine dollars and fifty cent. Nine dollars and fifty cent. So for water and sewer, so we don't, we're thinking that those other municipalities is just water, but for water and sewer in Nagades, that's nineteen dollars for water and sewer. Right? All right, we got another slide. All right, just wanted to say, I wanted to throw this in here because I didn't want people to say, hey, this guy was trying to do it all, he's trying to make sure nobody knew about it. So not only did we do seven town halls at six-thirty in the evening, in an area near you most of the time, also wrote a letter to the editor, to the Nagades Paris Journal, and to the Nagades Times. Soliciting input, begging for dialogue. By the way, I'm a guy who sits out there every Friday, well, most Fridays, because it's been cold a little lately, but most Fridays I'm out there, right? All right, hit it again, please. Of the administrative order, like I said, we have the administrative order, if you want to, if you want to see. Oh, he was going to take a picture. Yeah, yeah. It was blank anyway. Yeah, it's just blank. But I do have, what I'm saying is, I do have copies of the administrative order. It says what it says. The only other thing I think we're waiting on, Matt, is that... The only other thing I think we're waiting on, Matt, is that they say by twenty, they say by this year July, we have to have it designed out. We know, you know, but again, they're giving us a deadline to say, you, you've got to de- design your water treatment out. All right, hit it again, Steve. Now, I just wanted to throw this in here because it was on people's minds. I told you we had pictures. This is that sinkhole, is it four, what's four thirty-one Jefferson?
Four oh one.
Four oh one Jefferson. And you can see what Mr. Donahue was talking about, about the brick. These are the type of things that are unexpected. We didn't know. We discovered this, um, we discovered this, uh, I know there was a comment to the contrary earlier. But we discovered this, I think when we had a, that winter freeze, we, we saw the water leak. And then this was, this was discovered, uh, by us here, all right? So again, that was a very deep sinkhole. I've got some other images as well, okay? Deep, I think we said eighteen to tw- sixteen to twenty.
Well, the sewer line's sixteen feet deep, so the sink, the bottom of the sinkhole was at sixteen feet. But when we measured it initially, it was twelve feet deep, um, twelve feet wide and twenty feet long.
Okay, all right. So again, we see what's going on in this house. And I don't know if we mentioned it earlier when Councilman Nielsen read it, but two-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand dollars to fix this.
And that's an estimate.
And that's just, it could be more than that. So two-hundred, we didn't, we, but we did our budget. We're walking, we, we, we're enjoying the Christmas festival and all that, and then boom, we find out two-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand dollars just on this. Talking about breaking the budget. And not, not to mention all the other stuff Ed was talking about earlier. All right, I think there may be one more slide. I wanted to say this, and this is really my last thing, and I want council to have some remarks if they want to. Then we want to open it up to the general public. Um, there are a couple motions as well, because we have a fact, Councilman Harrington, he said, read the thing. I kind of got ahead of myself. But I want to talk about the grant wins. Here, here's why I want to talk about grant wins, because I want to show you that this administration, with the support of council, with folks like Nicole Gray, uh, folks like, uh, you know, our, our team, Merchant McIntyre, people like Nicholas Verret, we have been working tirelessly behind the scenes to bring in, Randy LaCass is on that team as well, um, that sits on the, we got a meeting tomorrow with Merchant McIntyre. Um, we've been working tirelessly to bring in grant funds, because we understand, even though, you know, the city brings in millions of dollars every year, there's an end to our money, all right? That, that, there's, we, 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 we can use some federal and state dollars to do the projects that I know Natchitoches residents want to see and should see. But some of these can't be done unless we have some grant wins. And so the first one, the big one, we're proud of, seventeen point two million dollars for sidewalks and lighting along Texas Street, as well as the implementation of the two thousand twenty bike and pedestrian plan. Seventeen point two. And let me be very clear, the federal government didn't just give us this money. And what I mean by that, this was a highly competitive grant. There were two billion dollars in awards. Get this, there were eleven billion dollars in requests. That means nine billion dollars worth of projects did not get awarded. But the city of Natchitoches was in that two-plus billion that did get awarded. It was some writing, it was some reading, it was some editing, it was some trips to DC, it was some hard work. But we brought home the bacon. And that's what you hired us to do, to have to bring on bacon. And we're going to continue to do that. So look, look, let's look at this other one. So we'll start to see this, I think, twenty twenty-five or twenty twenty-six, Nicole, when we'll see actually a project take place. I know it take, it takes time, I know folks want to, hey, why can't we use the money now? We have to use this money on what it was applied for and what the federal government says it is for, surface area transportation. One point six million for HVAC improvements, MLK Rec Center and the Event Center. That's where Black Mole was discovered at the, uh, Rec Center. And, uh, we're going to get new HVAC is coming, new HVAC system or improvements are coming to the Event Center as well. These are the type of things that go silent, that you know, uh, you don't really think and appreciate and, and see it. But that was one point six million we were able to get, uh, through some other grant writers that we use for this project. The other one, four-hundred-and-eighty million, uh, not eighty million, I wish four-hundred-and-eighty million, all right? Four-hundred-and-eighty thousand dollars to improve in larger capacity of the lift station on Kaiser Avenue. This was a Delta Regional Authority grant, uh, that we were able to get to improve our lift station there. Um, the growth that has happened on Kaiser, the also community care, which is that new, uh, skilled facility there just on Kaiser four ninety-four. So we got four hundred and eighty, almost five hundred thousand dollars, one more time. Four hundred thousand dollars, we just did a post today, for Richardson Park, to make those improvements, to put a walking track, to improve the restrooms, to do a pavilion, to put in the city's first inclusive play set. That is a set where, you know, um, individuals who may have some exceptionalities, uh, they get full benefit of this particular equipment. It's, um, anybody can, any kid can use it, but it also, it thinks about those with exceptionalities as well, autism and, and other kind of, uh, exceptionalities, all right? And parking spaces as well are coming, uh, there. Four hundred thousand dollar grant win. All right, we're matching to get the basketball court, we're going to match that, but that's outside of this grant, okay? If you pass on Lake Street, you'll see a big, uh, uh, a, a big graphic that shows what's happening. It may not look just like that graphics look, but I wanted to give you some picture. All right, last thing. So we, very strong possibility of us getting five million. I'm kind of hurting the message a little bit, but you remember Representative Gabe Furman said, um, about two months ago when he came, he kind of let the cat out of the bag, oh, you're on the list for the five million, you know? We were trying to figure that out. So here's the big deal. We're looking at money in every area to improve this city, to make this city better for the residents of Natchitoches, whether it's infrastructure, whether it's recreation, whether it's the air you breathe when you're at the Event Center and the Rec Center, whether it's flushing the toilet on Kaiser Avenue. We are looking at every area to improve, and we're continuously looking for every dollar to make this city better in ways you don't even think of and you don't even realize. So here's the thing about the five million. The five million goes back, or it goes to somebody else, if we don't come up with a match. The point is, is that we're looking at state and federal dollars, but there comes a point when there're going to be some things that are just going to be on us to do. Where the federal and state government, they can do so much, but they can't do it all. Why not? They've got other cities to take care of. They can't do, dump it all on Natchitoches. I wish they could, and then nobody would have to pay anything else. I don't want anybody to pay anything else extra. But if we're gonna meet those needs for our residents, to make us safer with water, with public safety, we're going to have to come in at some point. Last thing I want to say, I think this is the last thing, all right? Just to let you know, we've got a broadband grant out. We applied for a grant for a new South Drive Bridge, that's ten million dollars. Broadband grant is valued over ten million dollars. We're looking at congressionally designated spending. We tried last year to redo the park on Martin Luther King, we're going to try again. In fact, we went ahead and tried it again with the National Endowment of the Arts Grant, all right? I will say this, when it comes to congressionally designated spending, we even put in a hand to Northwestern State University, said, hey, guys, you don't know about this, you need to know about it. You know what? We'll allow our folks that we're using to guide you through the process, and they're getting two-point-four million dollars because of the weight of the city. It's true. Keep Natchitoches beautiful through Randy's, uh, department, reconnecting communities, trying to find a better way for South Town and, and the Pan Am, a better solution. I know there's been a solution that's been, uh, thought of, but we're looking for planning money, see if we can find a more sustainable, long-lasting, more valuable solution. Uh, I mentioned the National Endowment of the Arts, that's to redo some, some money to plan to redo that Ben Park on, uh, MLK Drive, that baseball park. A grant for the fire department, fire equipment, we're looking at ways in which we can find that. Law enforcement grant, and we're continuously looking for opportunities to bring money here so that we can make improvements that we need to make, all right? I'm done. All right, council members, I want to hear comments from you at this time.
I have a, I have a few questions. I want to, first, uh, Ms. Clarissa, I want to make sure, when this was brought before, so the last meeting, for the, um, electric utility increase, it was one point five kilowatt. We've, I know you brought it up, we reduced it. Since then, we've met, we've gone over everything, we've reduced it to one point three.
One point two.
One point two.
Yes, sir.
So even lower, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, even lower, yeah. And so I'm just, I'm clarifying what's in front of us is the correct numbers, right? So the three point three cents and the three point nine, that's based on the one point two, right?
Yes.
I'm just making sure what's in.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
That, that was my only question for you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Oh, no, 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 you're fine. No, you're fine, and, and just to, just for the audience, our current rate is two point seven.
Yeah.
So we'll, we'll chop and half that one point two rate increase over the next two years. And as you said, the first year would be three point three, um, that'd be the, uh, rate, our base rate, and then the second year would be three point nine.
All right, thank you very much for that. Um, and, and for, for Matt, I have something, if you don't mind clarifying this. The, you're talking about the, the electric fuel cost increase. And, and what's interesting is, I just brought up on my phone, we had the dates, the same months it shot up is when Russia invaded Ukraine, by the way. It's the exact same month when it shot up that crazy. But I want, just clarify to the people, am I correct? That fuel cost increase, we don't see any of that. That doesn't come to the city.
Correct. The PCA, when it's figured every month, that covers the cost of the electricity that we buy from our provider. So that PCA is a pass-through. So the two point seven cents is the only thing the city operates off of. If all we charge for our customers, the PCA, we would break even, we would not make any money.
Yeah. So. So I just wanted to clarify that, because of course we hear all the time from people, well, my, my electric bill went up astronomically, which it did. And you're already getting all that extra money. The city doesn't see any of that increase.
And just for, just so you know, the PCA, the, uh, kilowatt-hour charge, the two point seven cents, back in nineteen ninety-three, it was two point four cents. It's at two point seven now.
In ninety what?
Ninety-three.
That's what you were referring to, yeah. So ninety-three.
So when I was in third grade, it was, what, four cents less? Is that?
No, three cents.
Three cents. I mean, I'm sorry, yes.
Point three, point three cents.
Point three cents less.
Correct.
Yeah. Okay.
And what that means and what, what Councilman Harrington is getting to, and also Ed, Ed mentioned, and also what Matt is saying, we just haven't really kept up with inflation over time, is what this really boils down to. And I would say to Eddie's point about the one point five going down, this is just since the last meeting. We did, we talked, and we said, well, let's go down from getting one point five, let's go to one point two. We went down. I mean, I just don't think, because I'm a, a part of it, I don't think we could have done this a more compassionate way. When you think of stepping it in, you think of going down, you think of, even with the water and sewer, you're only going to be at twenty-three dollars after next year, May next year, and that's still, still the lowest of that list. Still the lowest of that list. So I'm sorry, Councilman, I don't know if you had anything else. Yeah.
Um, and then Chief Collins and Winn, um, you'll mention this will help, um, I mean, this will help our amazing police officers and firefighters who are here with the city and who are staying, have stayed with the city. It'll help maintain and keep them here. But what I'd also like you to bring up is how this will help also hire more. I mean, we have gaps, don't we? We're, we're understaffed, we're undermanned.
Uh, yes, sir. Um, right now, even though I'm staffed for seventy, I am actually down ten officers. It takes a while. What people don't realize is that because of the requirements for officers to become post-certified, they have to go off to a seventeen-week academy with no experience. That means they're being hired on to take life and death decisions. They have to go off to that academy, they get trained, but then when they come back, they have to go through a field training process, and that takes a while for them to get to that. So this will help encourage those people who may have left, and believe it or not, even though y'all haven't made a decision, I've had at least three inquiries, just inquiring, hey, you know, because there's that interest there. And we want to get those experienced officers coming back to Natchitoches, bringing that, that, that knowledge, that experience, and of course, that safety factor that it would provide to the citizens. We also want to encourage those people who are wanting to seek professions in law enforcement to come to us and not to other locations. Because I wouldn't be here if Natchitoches didn't give me an opportunity. I, I could have moved on somewhere else, but I stayed here and I enjoyed working here along with most of those individuals that are there. The ones that did learn and experience, uh, great things here in Natchitoches. We lost those to other agencies that sought those experiences and that training, because we are a training ground and we're, we're a good resource for great officers, and I'd love to keep those individuals here. Those employees here benefit the city.
Thank you. So I got to kind of, I got the, get out Chief Collins on the, we're a training ground for other people. People come to us and we send them off. I, I've had fire chiefs tell us, man, we love getting people from Natchitoches. So right now, tomorrow, I will be fully staffed, hopefully tomorrow. But they still have to go through firefighter one training, they also have to go through EMT training, which is about a year-long process. It costs a lot for the, the city invests a lot of money into our firefighters and police officers. So ru- it costs roughly twenty thousand dollars investment in one employee. Uh, six thousand dollars last year alone in physicals, a firefighter physical is ru- roughly nine hundred to a thousand dollars. So every time we have, that's why we need to retain these people. We need to, we need to, we invest in these people and we need to keep our investment, and we want them to stay here. We have good equipment, the city has seen that we have had good equipment, and this is across every department. But that good equipment is only as good as the firefighters, police officers and staff that we have. Our staff across the city are, is the city's greatest asset, so we need to keep these people in pay.
Chief, if I may ask, you said that you'll be fully staffed, what is that number?
So we have forty-six positions at Natchitoches Fire Department. We have forty-four of them are online twenty-four seven, uh, the other ones are, are admin personnel.
Okay. Uh, any of the council?
Like to echo that this has been going on for two years. And with police and fire, it's, we're finally going to propose a rate that I hopes helps us tremendously in recruitment and retention. And those two things are critical to the safety of the officer and the citizens. It allows us to hire better people at a good, good rate, that's more of a liv- livable wage than we have in the past. I hate to, to do any kind of increase, like I'm sure the rest of the, the table up here has. But unfortunately, with the eight point one inflation rate, and you heard the cost of goods that the utility department is facing, and we've got to get our reserves back up, uh, just all that compiled, it's time to stop kicking the can down the road and get this in and get, get everybody to, uh, a livable wage.
I'd like to say something, and I will go out for, you know, you're correct, Dale and Eddie. And I know a lot of people, you know, listening, you know, we've been having feedbacks from everybody about the utility rates, small homes. I live in, you know, Baylor Heights, and I experienced the same type of electricity bill that everybody else does. I have to use plastic around my house, I have to separate everything that everybody is complaining about. My faults, my small phrases, everybody's, you know, more isn't complaining about how are we going to squeeze blood out of rock? But we all manage to go places. We all managed to get our hair done. We all manage to do in and everything. You know, a lot of people might say, hey, your vote's going to matter. I didn't get in this seat to worry about a vote. I didn't get in this seat to worry about if I'm going to be elected. And a lot of people think that we get paid a lot of money to do this. I work twenty-four seven, running, going around in my neighborhood, making sure that everything is okay. I pick up paper, no one helps me. We get on Facebook and we talks about all sorts of things, but do we help? No. Only thing that we tends to do is sit up here and backsplash one another. But by saying that, can we afford it? We can afford it if we sit here and manage our money. I look at my police offers today, and I respect you all dearly for going out there, making the amount of money that y'all. for going out there, making the amount of money that y'all make to protect and serve. We all get on Facebook, talk about how we want crime to stop. But do we really want it to stop? We need to look at each other and ask. Because the only thing we do is sit up here and complain on Facebook every day about shots fired. Oh, Baylor Heights has this. J double Thomas has this. Oh, they don't do it over there, over there on Casa Street. The police patrolling over here. The police patrolling over there. But do we all sit up here and want change? Do we all want police officers? Do we? So that's more than sitting up here, taking a look and say, hey, are we going to get change? Or do we want to just sit up here and keep what we have, $13? The fire department having $8? That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Councilwoman Washington. Let me remind everybody that the concept of one microphone is only one person talking at a time. There will be, after the council speaks, we want to allow individuals from the audience, if they want to, to make remarks, going by the three-minute rule. Councilman PT.
Yeah, Mayor, I just want to say, and I may have a different thought process than, you know, everybody else. When we had discussion when the rates first came about, I was one that said that I wish that we could separate them. You know, water and sewer together and then electricity, you know, by itself. Because I 100% believe that we have to do something with the infrastructure. That's like a no-brainer. Even with the opportunity to get that additional money with the grants and things like that, you never want to let money go back. But also too, I'm kind of mindful, you know, what comes to my mind just in speaking with, you know, some residents. You know, being a councilperson, you meet a lot of people. And I have one lady, I'm pretty much her adopted grandson, I guess you could say. And right now, she got a hole in the top of her roof. Water point in the house. We didn't put three different tops up there. If I had the money to fix it, I'd fix it. But she can't get it fixed. Thank God for Ms. Nicole. We've been working, trying to get a grant, but it's too many loopholes. We can't get to the money. And so that's who I think about when I think about increasing the rate. I think about my Sunday school teacher who got a disabled husband who retired. You know, she served, wonderful lady. I did the math. You know, right now, her bill, $207.137. With that increase, it's $377. $105, that, it kind of breaks my soul just hearing that she would have to look. She brought her bill to me, I got a bill on my phone right now. She already trying to figure out, how can she cut back on using water? She trying to figure it out. She already trying to figure it out. This thing hadn't even went forth. So that's what comes to my mind when I think about. I thank God for these great police. God knows y'all need more money. It's what, 170? Chief said, 46.5? God knows y'all need more money. But I got to think about the other 1,500, or 15,000, I'm sorry, that's here in the city. And so that's my thoughts on it, you know. I wish there was another way. I'm not sure.
We all wish there was another way. Yeah. I think we all wish there was another way.
You know, so, but that's kind of my thought process on it. You know, we here in the city of Natchitoches, we all get in this role and we want to see change. And I think that we are heading in the right direction. But I just, my mind and my heart goes to those in that situation.
Point taken. I want to allow the Councilwoman to say something. But let's verify that math, that Councilman PT. Yeah, can you, because it's hitting.
No, sir. And I mean, without me seeing the bill, I don't want to, I don't want to say that your numbers are not correct. But we need to make sure that we're not looking at the PCA rate and we're just looking at the base rate and their usage. And then we want to make sure that the usage is not excessive for the size of the home because there may be other issues. Like you said, with the hole in the roof, that, you know.
Well, that's another lady, but.
Oh, well, I got you, I got you. But I just, I don't want to say that your figures are not correct. But we are only looking at the PCA rate. And that's only, you know, a cent, a cent point two.
We've got some talking in the audience that needs to cease, please.
It shouldn't launch the bill to $100 at all. I mean, you know, a penny is not going to launch that bill up to $100. But I would love to sit down and look at that with you.
Clarissa?
Yes.
If you don't mind recapping, on the low end, the water, sewage, electric, what is the combined increase?
Low end is about 15, 15 to 18 dollars. Because you'll see, on the low end, you'll see about $10 on electric rates per month. And then you'll see about $4. Like I said, 40% of our homes are under that 2,000 gallon usage. So you'll see another $4. So I'll say about 15 to 18, just depending on your usage and your home efficiency. And on the high end, you know, we discussed, it'll be about 35 maybe per month. But those are homes that are using a lot more electricity, a lot larger homes. And what I want to, even with the larger homes, even when you're looking at the average, our average is only $13. And that's every home in the city. So I want to make that clear, that even at the average, when you're pulling in every home, which are the largest homes to the smallest homes, there's still an average of only $13. And I know that we wanted to kind of drill down to certain areas, but I think that that average speaks volumes even more than looking at certain areas because that is everyone. And of course, you have a lot of top users, a lot of larger homes. So with the average being that low, that says a lot as well.
Yep. And thank you, Councilman Nelson. Even to your point, Councilman PT, we developed, we actually, honestly, we actually, I won't count the Councilwoman at large, then we want to open it up and stick to the, yeah, we want to open it up. But we actually took a trip to Ruston because they got the, they got 17 and a half of the same grant that we got, but just a few years apart. And they're doing some infrastructure improvements. But they actually said, hey, we just had to do a utility rate adjustment in the city of Ruston. All right? And I didn't, I didn't know that going up there. So the chief of staff to Mayor Walker sent us this document. And I want to, I think I emailed y'all, Council. I think this was an email. But I think it's a really good graphic, to your point, Councilman, that shows small homes, 1,200 square feet or less, what you may see. And we have to use the words like may, approximate, estimation, because you have the factoring consumption. There are certain times of the year when consumption is more and things of that nature. The average homes between 1,200 and 27, and then the larger homes, 27 or more. It shows what impact you'll see. And so we really just copied this from Ruston, put in the numbers that work, that are more unique to Natchitoches. And it even says here, you receive one utility bill. And really, we don't really think about it, but I know the council members says, and Matt, you too, when we met with Tom David, his big thing was, you know, you got everything on one bill. So we got everything on one bill, and it certainly makes you look really, really big. But on that one bill, there's water, there's sewer, there's electric, there's garbage. All right? So obviously, we don't send separate bills because that would be four separate envelopes, four separate, all that stuff. So, but it has that, it even has some helpful tips. And we just, same thing Ruston said, common electric infrastructure. So it says, why the increase? Common electric infrastructure items have tripled and quadrupled in cost. Going back to what Ed was saying. And so we'll still be one of the lowest providers, especially on water and sewers, you saw from the slide that we just showed. And it's really just, it's really just numbers. Really, really, really just, it's really math. Yes, Mayor?
Mayor, I don't have much to say. A lot has been said tonight, and I incur with what all the councilmen here tonight have said. Just want to add that I think the police and fire department do a great job here in Natchitoches. And I think they need to be commended for the great work that they do. And I just want to say that I hope we can come to some type of agreement that they need to be compensated for what they do. And that's all I really have to say.
Okay. All right, Steve, cue us up on the, on the three minutes. Want to allow public comments at this time. And we're just asking on the public comments, you know, just, we don't want to be redundant. We still have, certainly, we want to allow the public to speak, no doubt. But we still have about eight agenda items still. And it's already, it's already 7:40. Okay? All right. So anybody who wants to come, whatever viewpoint you may have, the mic is open now. And just when you, when you come, state your first and last name. And when you do that, the time will start, okay?
Carl Sias. I think everybody need a raise, including me too. Being serious. I like what Mr. PT said. I know that y'all can't separate. Macamex talk about separate, and they didn't go along with it. So I understand that. But y'all putting this as a package deal and everything else. And I'm not, I can't convince anybody. I know the firemen need a raise, the police need a raise. God knows I need one also. But the thing of it is, this is the same package that y'all turned away earlier. It's the same format. It's just got different numbers in it. And if I were asked a question to Matt, how much money are you allowed for your come-from-the-city budget that you get for the power plant?
How much money is budgeted?
Yeah.
As a whole?
A whole or half or three quarters? Huh?
I would have to pull those numbers. There's probably.
So you actually don't know what the numbers are right offhand?
No, sir. We have about, I would say, 30 accounts associated with the electric department. Everything from insurance, retirements, line loss material. I could certainly get those numbers for you, but I can't quote them off the top of my head.
So let me ask you something. The money that you all don't spend, and what I'm saying is, the money that you all don't spend, that y'all do spend, keep from losing from the city cutting y'all budget in the next year.
Correct.
Huh? Correct?
I'm not exactly sure what you're asking, Ms. Sias.
Huh?
Are you asking about the, are you asking about the revenue that's left over at the end of the year?
Yes.
Okay, that goes into a reserve. Oh, go ahead.
It goes into a reserve.
Yes, sir.
Now, who use that reserve?
The reserve is for the city as a whole. So we have a lot of non-revenue generating departments in the city. So we have to use revenue from other areas to subsidize their budgets. So, i.e. fire, police, recreation, public works. Those are not departments that actually generate any type of revenue. We do have other revenue sources like our taxes, but that does not cover all of the operating expenses for those departments. So we do.
Mayor, she talked two minutes of my time.
Oh, I'm sorry. I am so sorry.
No, no.
I'm moving, I'm moving.
All right, thank you, Ms. Sias. All right, is there any other comment from the public? Please, if you do have a comment, state your first and last name before you speak, and your three minutes will start after that. Okay, Dr. Parker? Steve is working on getting us queued up.
Hi, my name's Carmella Parker. And I just wanted to speak to Councilman PT. I hear your heart. And I just wanted to make sure that you knew that the Louisiana Housing Corporation has funds available for weatherization for houses as well as energy assistance programs. So that, I came up here to, just to let everybody know that that is available here with the state. And I do think it's just unfortunate that we're going to have to look at raising it, but we can't kick this down the road any further. We just cannot. And we're known for being the Christmas town, but our fire and our police are associated with it silently in the background, making sure that we have a safe, forever Christmas here in Natchitoches. So I do believe that we do need to do something to respect and honor their service to our city.
All right. Thanks a lot, Dr. Parker. And just allow me, whoever is coming next, please go ahead and come to the microphone. And Steve, you can get the clock back queued up. But to what she said, the Louisiana Housing Corporation, Ms. Gray worked it out to where we had them to do a road show here, and they just laid out all of their great programs. Thanks, some of you on the council, you were here. And that's one of the things, one of my goals for this year is to really advertise, publicize those great programs that are underutilized. We've been trying to work with the USDA. I know we've kind of run into some kind of bureaucracy with one of those ones, but we're going to try some of the other ones. But as Dr. Parker said, the Louisiana Housing Corporation has a lot of programs that fit our community, a lot of people can take advantage of. So we're striving to really make, make that known to everybody. So we're discussing how we're going to roll that out more, more effect. I say, it's already existing, but we just need to make sure our public knows here.
I speak with Ms. Sharon Harris with Office of Community Service.
Okay.
Over there is what Ms. is speaking of.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak on this agenda item? Okay, all right. Please state your first and last name.
My name is Deborah Thompson. And I just have a question. These rates that we are talking about, is this only for households? Or does it also include businesses? Includes businesses also. And their rate is the same as the household rate? Everybody rates?
No, ma'am, no, ma'am. But the increase will be the same as far as the 1.2 cents. But their rates are not the same as households. We have different classes. There are multiple classes, and some of the rates do vary.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks a lot for the question. Okay. I'm sorry, ma'am, we didn't understand you.
She said she's for the.
She's for the police.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Dorothy McGasky. And I just wanted to say briefly that I think we all understand, like, it's been stated, we hurt everybody. And I think that we basically are in agreement that an increase is needed for the city police and the firemen. And what I hate to hear, that it's possibly at the expense of people that really can't afford to pay anymore. You have senior citizens. You have people that are living below the poverty line. And I heard it said, well, we do whatever else we want to do. But all of us don't. We try to make ends meet. Seniors, elderly people, seniors, poor people, single-family households, even folks that, where there are two people working in a household. We are trying to make ends meet because this is a poor city. And we're trying to survive. And so my question is, is there any other source, any other department that can help provide for this increase under community development, for example, or any other state funding, or feral funding, or grant that can assist? We don't want to deny, we're not against our firemen or our police officers because they are our first responders. And we need them.
One microphone, Ms. McGasky is speaking. Only Ms. McGasky at this point.
And the only thing I would like to say furthermore is that I heard our councilmen thank them for the work that they've done, but they are working shorthanded. And the citizens are suffering as a result of that. We are afraid in this city because the crime has increased substantially. And we do need some help. But we need for you all to look wherever else it might be possible to get the monies to make it feasible for us to be able to pay an increase for the officers and the firemen.
Ms. McGasky, I would like you to stay because you may have a follow-up with me. That was really the purpose of the slide, where I showed you the 17.2 million that we got for infrastructure, the 1.6 we got for HVAC improvements for the MLK Center, the $400,000 that we. The four hundred thousand that we got. And I remember you meeting with us saying that we needed to do some improvements in Richardson Park. And so we went out and found some money for that. Um, the five hundred thousand dollars for the lift station on Casa Avenue. The five million that I think is very imminent, as I'm told by legislators, that we're gonna get to go to the water treatment. Here's the issue, and I tried to make that clear, but here's, here's the thing. We're gonna get five million, it looks like, from the state government. Looks like we're gonna get five million. I didn't mention this earlier, but there's a four billion dollar request for those water sector dollars. They only had seven hundred and fifty million dollars. So there's over three billion dollars worth of projects who are not getting anything. So these grants we're winning, I mean, you know, it's some work that goes into it. And it's some skill and, you know, so- Well, what I'm saying is-
And skills.
Yes, it's one time. We've got a sixteen point seven million dollar water treatment project. And I'm thankful for the five million, but it's, it's five million. So that means, and that's, that was my point earlier. We are hungry about getting money from state and federal government, private dollars, whatever they may see. I hope y'all have seen that in two years. It will be over twenty-two million dollars, I think. No, twenty, closer to twenty-three, twenty-four million dollars that we've gotten, that we worked together. This has been a committee effort. Council had to vote to approve these things.
And it's appreciated by the citizens.
My point is- There, there's a gap from sixteen million to five million. That's the gap. Federal government has done what they said they're gonna do on that, on that issue. We have to come up with the rest. That's just really, we, we have to come up with the rest on that.
I hope that we can look at other sources to make it-
Hey, let me ask you this before you go.
Yes.
Do you have a recommendation about other, other sources, other ways, other things we can look at?
Um, well, if you say that you've gotten all you can get from the feral government, you've gotten all you can get from the state government, is that correct?
Yep.
Okay, uh, there are no more grants available?
We don't think there're gonna be any more grants, right Matt, Nicole, any more grants with this? This is what they're gonna do for water treatment.
Correct.
Yeah. This is what they're gonna do for water treatment.
And, okay, my, um, from the, the US Justice Department with us being a blighted city.
We're looking at them as well. I'm glad you brought them up.
Yes.
But we're looking, we're, I think Chief, you had a meeting with, Chief, both chiefs had a meeting with the, the, the same group that helped to deliver us, because I teamed a lot of work too, but helped to deliver the seventeen point two million. And I think your work, that, that, you haven't started yet, but you're gonna be working on some Department of Justice grants.
Yes, sir, that's correct. We're also trying to look into funding that, uh, is made available for cops programs, for community policing. And then they also have some targeted violence programs and, and, uh, targeted violence prevention programs that are just becoming available. There's actually a hearing on Friday, um, so that they can start talking about the outlay and, and what we can expect. In that process, I've included Nicole Gray along with several of our grant writers at our department.
But that, if you're awarded a grant from them for whatever amount, that's a one-time payment.
Yes, sir.
But you can't put that towards salaries right now.
Yes, sir.
Some of the grants actually will end up costing the city more in the long run. That's like for us, the safer grant. So that will allow us to hire personnel. But after three years, the city would have to, would have to take over the payment of those people, of those personnel. And that, that's, that would be-
And my, one last question. I was told that there, um, about the budget that was available for community development. And that the most monies, um, out of that budget is used for downtown Natchitoches and for the, um, historical district. Is it feasible for monies to be used, uh, from that department to assist with an increase?
I mean, it just matter to what, what extent are you talking? I mean, what are you, what are you suggesting basically?
I'm asking, is there monies available from that department that could be transferred into another budget?
Ms. McGasky? Ms. McGasky? Am I saying it right, Ms. McGasky?
Yes, sure.
Okay, yeah, so we did take a look at our operational budgets. And for community development, that may be three percent of our total budget. So when you're talking about needing at least four million dollars to address everything that we laid out, their, their budget is not even, um, a quarter of that. You know, just to put it in, you know, put it in, in clear view. Um, every other department, I know that community development is one that we may say, it may not need it. And that's, that's to everyone's opinion. But the amount of money that's available to them would not be even close to address any of these factors. Especially the one point seven million dollars that we need for salaries. And just to make it clear, we're not just talking about salaries here. We're talking about the water treatment plan. We're talking about sustainability because of the increases in, uh, overall costs. I, I don't want to just kind of harp on that because there are other things that we're trying to address with this increase. But I can tell you that that budget will not suffice everything that we need, you know, to address. And that budget is available to you on the website. If you want to look at it and look at the line items, how much it is and kind of the percentage is, oh, for the overall budget. Um, that is something that we looked at. And every other department, um, that we have listed there, um, is what I would call critical need. You know, you wouldn't be able to go into a public works and cut their budget, a police and cut their budget. You know, um, those are critical need areas.
I understand.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks a lot, Ms. McGasky. Uh, any other comments at this time? Again, I know the hour is far spent. And we shall talk about this in our debrief on tomorrow. Uh, but, but any other, uh, comments at this time? All right, uh, Council, I think Alex, are you advising us that there are at least? Uh, first of all, Councilman Harrington. Yeah, he hadn't even read it yet. So do we just want to start with that and then talk about the motions that need to go forward?
Yeah, I think we need to make a motion to amend the, the ordinance to reflect-
Want to go ahead and do that now?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. So he wants to make a motion to amend the agenda to say that we're, we're going down from one point five cent to one point two cent, as we discussed. Uh, we had noticed that that wasn't a change somewhere. But we, we, we do want to change it to go down from one point five to one point two cent. Okay?
I'll make said motion.
Okay. Motion been made and seconded to make the ordinance reflect not one point five, but one point two, um, uh, to go downward.
And to clarify, the one before is, is the correct numbers.
Right. Yeah, 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 that, that's correct.
That's correct.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Yes.
All right, comments and questions, Council, about this? This is just to make, make, make it known in ordinance. Okay, all right. Any public comments or questions about that? All right, seeing now, Mrs. Stacy Roca vote.
Eli?
No.
Nelson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
PT?
Yes.
All right, so that motion carries to go down from one point five to one point two, uh, on the KWH. All right, now Councilman Harrington.
Yes, um, um, in fact, before I read this, I'm gonna say one more thing.
Yeah, go ahead.
Say one more thing.
Then you said to amend the agenda from one point two?
Oh, yeah. So you want to say, just can we verbalize and say, let the record reflect?
Yeah, make, make the record realize and stuff, because I thought you was gonna keep the-
Oh, you thought it was going up?
Yeah, I'm like, okay, because I'm like, no.
Yeah, this is go from the one point five to the one point two.
Okay, so we're going now.
This is to ask, ask for less. Okay, so make the record reflect that Councilwoman Washington Eli i- is in favor of the decrease from one point five to one point two. Okay, Councilman Harrington.
Yeah, before I read this, I do want to say one more thing, uh, I meant to say earlier, I apologize. Is, as we've all said, no one wants to do this. And we've been meeting on this for well over a year now, trying to figure out all kind of different ways. And, and that's why, that's why you put us here. That's why you put each one of us here to make these hard decisions, to meet countless hours, have mercy, countless hours on this for well over a year. And, and leadership is not, is making those hard decisions. Leadership's making a decision where we're trying to do what's for the best, the betterment of the city and not do just trying to get a vote. And if we get out vote, if we get voted out because we did the right thing for the city, then so be it.
So be it.
Because that's leadership. And I want to give kudos to this guy right here for coming up and showing what a leader does. Because he's the one who brought this up. He's the one who brought this before us and showed us this. I mean, we knew it was an issue, but showed ways and looked at every avenue. He didn't just say, this is how we gotta do it, day one, boom, this is what it's gonna be. I mean, I'm talking about a year trying to figure this out, of every possible way to do it other than what's before us right now. And this, and that's leadership. And I just, I wanted to say that before I read this.
Well, I appreciate you, I appreciate you.
So now I'll read it. Um, this is ordinance eighty-six of twenty- twenty-two, was it maybe? But whatever, ordinance eighty-six is an ordinance to amend and reenact sections thirty dash eighteen and thirty dash forty-two, both of which are located in Article Four of Section Thirty of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Natchitoches entitled Utilities. Said amendment's being made to implement changes in new rates for electrical service and a new rate schedule for water use, which new rate structure has been proposed in an electrical and water rate study prepared by Schuler Consulting Company, providing for advertising, further providing for separability, and further providing for repealer. I move to adopt ordinance eighty-six of twenty twenty-three.
No, it's twenty-two. We entered this in December the twelfth.
Yes.
And then we tabled it at the last meeting on the night. So that, that's correct.
Of twenty twenty-two.
Twenty twenty-two. Motion been made, did we get a second?
Last second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. All right, we've already had comment, I think, on it. So, uh, are there any, I guess we have to ask any other final comment? Okay, all right, Council, you good? All right, Mrs. Stacy Roca vote.
Eli?
No.
Nelson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
PT?
No.
All right, motion carries. All right. Next item on the agenda is ordinance number zero zero two. That's Councilman Nielsen.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number zero zero two of two thousand twenty-three. An ordinance to provide the division of the current position of purchasing and human resources into two separate positions to amend the Personnel Policies Manual to provide for the new position of human resources in the organizational chart, providing for advertising, further providing for separability, and further providing for a repealer and effective date of ordinance. And I move to adopt ordinance number zero zero two of two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Look, Sarah was here last week. I think you had an opportunity to ask her some questions. You know, I believe she's doing a really good job as HR, just to separate it out. I, I think I said just before, I said again, Ed was doing it. Um, and it's, it's not because Ed wasn't doing a good job. He's a very efficient, hardworking person. But we, uh, I just, I just felt HR needed to be, uh, um, in, in, uh, unto itself. You know, uh, to give people the, you know, if they needed to go to discuss some personal personnel matters and all of those things like that, so. Um, but she's been doing some other things as well, so, and she's got a vision for the position. And, um, think it's gonna work out really well. Any comments or questions, Council? All right, any public comments or questions about this agenda item? All right, seeing now, Mrs. Stacy Roca vote.
Eli?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
PT?
Yes.
All right, that motion carries as well. Um, the next item on the agenda is zero zero three of two thousand twenty-three, right? Okay, that's Councilman PT.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number zero zero three. Ordinance amending the two thousand and twenty-two and two thousand and twenty-three budget to reflect additional revenues and expenses. I so move that ordinance number zero zero three be adopted.
Second.
All right, motion been made and seconded to adopt this. Um, what was this particular one is?
Is this, is this seventy-five thousand?
Oh, this might be the Big Brother, Big Sister money?
Yeah, that's exactly what it is.
Okay.
You know, that we were awarded seventy-five thousand dollars from the state to support our Big Brother, Big Sister program here in Natchitoches. We're kind of just a pass through. So they, um, gave us the money and now we'll pay that out to that organization locally. So we're just pretty much a pass through.
Yep. So Big Brother, Big Sister, I think we said one-to-one mentorship. I think everybody agrees we need that here. We were able to get some funds from the state, uh, to make it a reality for year one. There's still gonna be some partnership that we're gonna expect. But, uh, again, we want to mentor our youth and make sure they're going in the right direction. Comments or questions, Council, about this item? Any public comments or questions here? Okay, seeing now, Mrs. Stacy Roca vote.
Eli?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
PT?
Yes.
All right, that, that carries as well. Uh, next item is, uh, zero zero four of two thousand twenty-three. That's Councilman Harrington.
Zero zero four of two thousand twenty-three is an ordinance amending the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three budget to reflect additional revenues and expenditures. And I move to adopt ordinance four of two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. What is this particular amendment, Clarissa?
Yes, sir, so this is to honor our agreement with Chick-fil-A on some infrastructure to the road and sewer, if I'm not mistaken.
That's right.
Um, and we had allocated, well, we hadn't allocated the hundred thousand dollars. We did agree that we would award them for those infrastructure changes that stayed with the city of a hundred thousand dollars. So now we're just honoring that. And we had to make some budget allocations to support that. Um, one line item that we used was, um, vehicles. So we are, are not gonna purchase one vehicle, uh, that was worth seventy-five thousand. We won't purchase that. And then there was some repair and maintenance to buildings, um, we saw that where we could, uh, pull some funds from there to support that.
So we found, we found a way to-
Yeah, to honor that.
Make this agreement. Council, you got questions or comments about that? Okay, any public comments or questions about this particular item? All right, seeing now, Mrs. Stacy Roca vote.
Eli?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
PT?
Yes.
All right, that motion carries also. Uh, the next few items are for introduction. And we have, um, ordinance number zero zero five of two thousand twenty-three. That's Councilwoman at large, Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number zero zero five of two thousand twenty-three. It's an ordinance upon the recommendations of the Finance Department that the City of Natchitoches enter into a lease of twenty-nine point seven acre tract in industrial park for hay operations with M and M Farms of Kane River LOC and authorizing the mayor, Ronnie Williams, Jr., to execute said lease on behalf of the City of Natchitoches and to provide, uh, for advertising. Uh, the City of Natchitoches has entered into a lease agreement with, uh, for twenty-nine point seven acre tract south of Industrial Drive in industrial park for hay to M and M Farms of Kane River LOC. Uh, sometimes here and out to refer to as M and M. And whereas the Finance Department and Purchase Department has recommended to the city council that the lease be renewed with M and M for, for an additional three-year term. And now therefore be ordained by the city council of the City of Natchitoches, that the recommendation of the Purchase Department are hereby approved and be it further deemed that Ronnie Williams, Jr., mayor of the City of Natchitoches, be in hereby authorized and empowered to enter into the lease agreement with M and M for hay operations. This is for introduction only.
Ed?
Yes, the comments I have on this one and the next two items on the agenda are exactly the same.
Okay.
Combined-
Zero zero five, zero zero seven, and zero zero eight?
That's correct.
Okay, gotcha.
That's correct. This is, these are hay leases. If we weren't doing the hay leases, it would be public works or, uh, other city personnel maintaining these properties. We're saving equipment costs, we're saving labor, we're saving fuel costs, we're saving wear and tear on the equipment. Plus the grass that otherwise will be bush hogged and chopped up and go to waste is actually getting rolled and being put to good use. Plus, we're making a little money off of it instead of spending a lot of money. So all, all three of these items are, um, good for the city.
Okay. Uh, Council, you got any comments or questions for Ed? Okay, again, these are just for introduction, so we'll have to vote in our February thirteenth meeting. All right, um, so that was zero zero five.[1749.76] Moving on now to zero-zero-seven. Ed comments say the same, but Councilman PT, you can go ahead and read it for introduction purposes.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number zero-zero-seven of two thousand and twenty-three, an ordinance upon the recommendations of the Finance Department that the City of Natchitoches enter into a lease of a twenty-five-acre tract in the Industrial Park for hay operations with James Stacy and authorizing the mayor, Ronnie Williams, Jr., to execute said lease on behalf of the City of Natchitoches. This is for introduction only.
Ed made that explanation already. I think everybody got it. Again, if there happen to be some questions that develop from now until our next meeting, which actually is a three-week period this time because of the fifth Sunday. But, so let's move on to zero-zero-eight of two thousand twenty-three. That's Councilwoman Washington, Eli.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number zero-zero-eight of two thousand twenty-three, ordinance upon the recommendation of the Finance Department and the Airport Commission that the City of, the City of Natchitoches authorize the lease of the area of thence of the Natchitoches Regional Airport for hay operation with James Russell Stacy and authorize the mayor, Ronnie Williams, Jr., to execute this said lease on behalf of the City of Natchitoches and provide for advertisement. And this is for introduction only.
All right, introduction, same thing. Think Ed have a new explanation for us coming with zero-zero-nine. But can counsel, if you got any questions or comments, be sure to ask those in the in-between time or even when we come to the next meeting on the thirteenth. All right, next item is Councilman Harrington, zero-zero-nine of two thousand twenty-three.
Zero-zero-nine of two thousand twenty-three is an ordinance authorizing the mayor of the City of Natchitoches, Ronnie Williams, to execute an agricultural lease from the City of Natchitoches in favor of John Danley and Sally Danley of that property located between the South Louisiana Highway One bypass and Waterwell Road being tracks B and D as shown on a survey by Glenn L. Cannon dated October two thousand five and recorded at map slide five sixty-nine B of the records of Natchitoches Parish, Louisiana, and further consenting to a sublease from Pilgrim's Pride to Russell Stacy of track B as shown on a survey by Glenn L. Cannon dated October two thousand five and recorded at map slide five sixty-nine B of the records of Natchitoches Parish, Louisiana, and further providing for advertising with lease for a public hearing and an effective date. This is for introduction only.
Ed, you got a new explanation for us?
Yeah, this one's a rowcrop, rowcrop lease, so it's different from the others. And this one is a change of hands. John Danley outbid Russell Stacy or Stacy Farms on the RFP. So we do have a new farmer doing this. Mr. Danley's a well-known farmer in the, in the parish and farms, I guess primarily up around PiHattan, but he has other land that he farms near Natchitoches. And in fact, one of the places that he does farm bumps up to this property, so it's convenient to him. It's the property you see right behind Pilgrim's Pride feed mill, but not in its entirety. There's actually more tracks behind there. But this is a, a big part of it, almost two-hundred acres of that property is, will be farmed by Mr. Danley. And we did do an RFP and his proposal was a hundred and thirty-seven dollars an acre.
Okay. Thanks, Ed, for that explanation. Counsel, you got any questions or comments for Ed at this point? Okay, again, as I said earlier, if any happen to arise, you can, you know where to reach Ed, but we could also ask him at the next meeting we have. Thanks again for the explanation. Next item on the agenda is item number zero-one-zero. That's Councilwoman at Large Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. This is for introduction. Ordinance number zero-one-zero of two thousand and twenty-three is an ordinance to designate funds from the American Rescue Plan to assist with the water treatment project in the City of Natchitoches that are essential to public health and welfare and to otherwise provide with respect thereto. And again, this is for introduction only.
All right, folks, what this is about is, so we got six-point-four million from the American Rescue Plan. Here's, every city got it. This is one of those things you didn't have to apply for. All of us got it, unlike those other grants I mentioned earlier. But we reserved early on, we wanted to allocate one-point-two-five for the water sector match. I think the water sector announcement is imminent, you know. We will have a press release and I know that kind of make it anticlimactic, but, but we wanted to go ahead and have those funds and be able to match it, that, that five million for water sector. So that's what this is about, okay? Counsel, any comments or questions for me on this? Okay, all right, again, it will be voted on, on the thirteenth of February. Next few items are voted on tonight, the resolutions. First one is zero-zero-six of two thousand twenty-three, and that's Councilman Nielsen.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution number six of two thousand twenty-three, resolution approving the execution of the contract binding between the State of Louisiana Division of Administration, Office of Community Development in the City of Natchitoches for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two, Local Government Assistance Program, LGAAP, for the amount of thirteen thousand dollars, thirteen thousand five hundred dollars to purchase hazmat suits, gas detectors, rubber boots and gloves for the Natchitoches Fire Department. And I move that we adopt resolution number six of two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
All right, motion has been made a seconded to adopt this resolution. This is the fire department, right?
Yes, sir. It's gonna replace some hazmat equipment that, that's been outdated and it's time to replace.
We, we received the funds already or we're gonna receive the funds?
We're, we're gonna receive the funds.
And we have to do this resolution as a step before we actually get the money?
Yes.
Okay, all right, any questions for Chief Wynn? I think he's pretty, pretty clear as to what this, this is gonna do. Any, any public comments or questions? All right, seeing none, Mrs. Stacy, roll call vote.
Eli?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
PT?
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. Next item is number zero-zero-seven of two thousand twenty-three. That's Councilwoman at Large Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution zero-zero-seven of two thousand twenty-three is a resolution authorizing the mayor of the City of Natchitoches, Ronnie Williams, Jr., to enter into a master services agreement with KSA Engineers. Whereas the City of Natchitoches is a political subdivision of the State of Louisiana being a home charter municipality created pursuant to the Constitution revised statutes of the State of Louisiana. And whereas the City and the Natchitoches Airport Commission solicited proposals for engineering services under request for qualifications number zero-one-one-two and received proposals from Airport Development Group of Denver, Colorado, Cothran Graft Smoke, Smock Engineering of Shreveport, and KSA of Shreveport, Louisiana. And whereas the proposals received have been reviewed by a committee of Ed Lee, Larry Cooper, and Stanley Salter, and the committee was unanimous in its decision to award RFQ zero-one-one-two to KSA Engineers of Shreveport, Louisiana, for a three-year term with the option of two additional one-year terms, assuming all conditions of the previous terms were satisfactorily met. Whereas on January seventeenth, my birthday, the Natchitoches Airport Commission-
Happy birthday.
-approved resolution number oh-one of two thousand and twenty-three, recommended that the City and the, and the Natchitoches Airport Commission enter into a master service agreement with KSA Engineers. And whereas further, after reading the recommendations of the Natchitoches Regional Airport Committee, the City Council is of the opinion that it is in the interest of the city to enter into this master agreement, service agreement with KSA Engineers, and desires to authorize Mayor Ronnie, Mayor Ronnie Williams, Jr., to execute the agreement and all attachments thereto. Now therefore, be resolved that the City Council convenes as follows. Let me go down a little further. And I move for adoption of resolution number zero-one-zero.
Is that zero-zero-seven?
Zero-zero-seven.
I'm thinking.
Zero-zero-seven.
Motion made, thank you, Councilwoman Large Smith, and Councilman PT, motion made a seconded. Matt, is there anything you see, kind of want to shorten, shorten terms you wanna?
It's for their-
Oh, oh, this is not Matt. This is Ed. Okay, go ahead, Ed. Oh, this is the airport. Okay, go ahead, Ed, go ahead, Ed.
Okay, I do wanna clarify something here, an oversight on my part. Whereas further, the very first one, which is actually the second paragraph, we only received one proposal. We did not receive Cothran Graft Smoke or Airport Development Group. We only received KSA. So I do, I do wanna clarify that and that was on me.
Go ahead.
We've had KSA for the last five years at the airport and we've done a lot of good projects. In fact, we're actually doing this one a little sooner than we need to be because we've caught up on all of our projects for our capital improvement program that the FAA approved. And once you do all your projects, you have to get a new agreement. So we haven't done quite the five years. So we've had a really good run in the last five years of getting our projects done. We're on, already have preliminary approval for about two and a quarter and depending on the bids, two and a half million dollars of projects this year. So there's a lot happening at the airport right now and all these projects are going on. And KSA has done good for us in the past and we wanna keep using them. And they are the only proposal that we received just because the consultant community knows that we're happy with the airport and they didn't go through, with KSA, and they just didn't go through the trouble of putting in a proposal.
Is, I think KSA, and maybe some other entities as well, but a lot of the grants we get from, from the airport, that's on work that they're doing, right, KSA?
Well, they're, they are consultant, but yeah, it's in conjunction with me, Larry, the State of Louisiana, the FAA, and KSA, and the Airport Commission. So there's a, there's a lot of hands in it.
Okay, gotcha. All right, appreciate that. Yeah, any questions or comments for Ed, counsel?
Yeah, I, I see that no council member was present when this proposal was done.
She's referring, we typically have a council member, I think.
Typically.
A part of the, uh-
Part of the proposals when you meet these bids.
Well, this was RFQ, I mean, on the bids, yes, I have been inviting you, I guess.
I didn't get it.
No, I, I, it was an oversight on me why I didn't send one to you, but typically I do invite you to the bids because you have made that request to me.
Yeah, well, I didn't get one, that's, okay.
But I, I have the book that I'll be happy to show it to you, share it with you. Again, it's one proposal and it's the one that we've been using for several years and we're more than pleased with.
Yep. Okay, any other questions or comments? Are there any public comments about this particular agenda item? All right, seeing none, Mrs. Stacy, roll call vote.
Eli?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
PT?
Yes.
All right, that motion carries as well. Item number, resolution number zero-zero-eight of two thousand twenty-three is Councilman PT.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution number zero-zero-eight of two thousand and twenty-three, a resolution approving a software change order between the City of Natchitoches and Motorola Solutions to provide for data conversion related to certain communications equipment and authorizing the mayor, Ronnie Williams, Jr., to execute the software change order on behalf of the City of Natchitoches. I so move that resolution number zero-zero-eight be adopted.
Second.
Motion made a seconded. Chief, you got some remarks on this one?
Basically, this is, will be a data conversion to take our, our years, well, decades' worth of information from our old system that we're moving from to, and convert it to bring it over to the new system. We'll be able to go ahead and deprecate the old system, shut it down and not pay maintenance or have to look at renewal costs. The sys, the system that we're on is end of life. Whenever the city upgraded to their new lease purchase, we did not do so and that would be an expenditure of roughly about forty thousand, fifty thousand that's unneeded to, to stay on that platform since we're moving to a new one. So this would be a cost savings to us, plus it consolidates our information in the same location and it's being done in tandem with the data that's stored. The Sheriff's Office data is stored on the same system and they'll be converting theirs over as well to the new multi-agency system we have.
Okay. All right, any comments or questions for Chief Collins? All right, any public comments or questions? Seeing none, Mrs. Stacy, roll call vote.
Eli?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
PT?
Yes.
Motion carries as well. Lastly, resolution number zero-zero-nine of two thousand twenty-three is Councilman Harrington.
Resolution zero-zero-nine of two thousand twenty-three is a resolution approving the terms and form of a cooperative endeavor agreement between the City of Natchitoches and the Louisiana Office of the Lieutenant Governor, Department of Culture, Recreation and Tourism, authorizing the mayor to execute the cooperative endeavor agreement between the City of Natchitoches and the Louisiana Office of the Lieutenant Governor, Department of Culture, Recreation and Tourism, which provide for terms for Keep Louisiana Beautiful Beautification Grant. I move to adopt resolution zero-zero-nine of two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
All right, motion has been made a seconded. Randy, is there some additional comment you have on this? I've been seeing some emails back and forth the last couple of days.
Mayor, Keep Louisiana Beautiful program opened up two grant cycles at a December nineteenth deadline, as I recall for filing. We filed this five-thousand-dollar beautification grant, which you don't remember much about the ice storm, but we lost about seven-hundred mature plants in all of our landscaped areas all over town. And this particular grant will fund putting landscaping back in the first median of University when you come off of I-49. We have a fifteen percent match and then we have some end kind that was part of it. We're also getting a trash receptacle grant, but we haven't received the co-op on it yet. We'll probably have a resolution on when it comes in. But we've been real successful in these small grants.
Yep. You got questions, comments, counsel, for Randy? Any public comments or questions about this Keep Natchitoches Beautiful grant? Another grant we appreciate getting and have our folks apply for. All right, seeing none. Okay, yes, ma'am.
What areas are we gonna be using this for all of Natchitoches?
You talking about the area that we're gonna landscape? It's actually the center median of University Boulevard. It's the first median as you come off of I-49 entering into the town. The grant is directed at gateway signage, that type landscaping. And that's one we submitted that because we knew it'd get approved.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, seeing none, Mrs. Stacy, roll call vote.
Eli?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
PT?
Yes.
All right, this may be a little overkill, guys, but I think it's better to be safe than sorry. I know we said we could just ask them to withdraw from ordinance number zero-seven-three, but brought to my attention that it may be best for us to go ahead and move it off of the agenda. Any comment, Alex, on that?
No, just kind of came to me once we made the eight o'clock, my mind started.
Mayor, I, I make a motion that we remove item number, that was the-
Zero, yeah, ordinance number zero-seven-three.
Right, zero-zero, zero-seven-three, which was the ordinance extending the city limits.
I'll say it.
Motion made a seconded. I think everybody knows why that happened. They obviously withdrew. I don't think, any comments or questions?
I think Dale, you made the second first, didn't you?
Yeah, but that's fine, Ed can have it.
I already put him down for second.
Okay, so Dale got it this time. All right, make sure you keep a record who's making the seconds. We're gonna see if somebody applies. All right, seeing no comments or questions, roll call vote.
Eli?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
PT?
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. We, again, the thirteenth of February, right before Valentine's Day, we're gonna have our next meeting, so that's three weeks from now. Download the Go Natchitoches app to know what's going on in the city limits. Also, regroup is really important. We've been sending out messages. We're gonna do a press release tomorrow about the scene code to update everybody. People on regroup, they get that text message to their phone People on regroup, they get that text message to their phone so they can know, you know, I need to go, not go that way, or whatever the case may be. So, so download that. So we have a credit, we have a credit and debit class. This is, join us this January, learn how to build your credit score and manage your credit and debt. Okay, interesting. So this is at the Engage Federal Credit Union. Mm-hmm. Where is Engage?
Over on...
Oh, it's going to be... Where, where is Engage?
Over there by...
I like it going toward the...
Oh, okay. Hmm, didn't know. But, but yeah, this is going to be at the library. Okay, good. Thanks, that, that's really good. We're going to promote that. All right, this is, um, four H Fishing and Fanatics Rainbow Trout Roundup at Park Natchitoches. All right, January twenty-fifth at three thirty, uh, PM, all right? That is, uh, this Saturday? No. Yeah, that's, that's closer, yeah.
They'll be stocking the pond tomorrow at approximately four thirty, um, where, if the weather permits, coming out of Missouri with the trout.
Gotcha. Thanks a lot for that information, Kevin. All right, then we have a free Medicare educational seminar, NPL adult program. That is happening, uh, at, on January twenty-sixth, ten AM to one PM, and then three to four PM, third floor meeting room.[1749.64]